Good evening, everyone, and wow, what a treat, what a crowd. It's a pleasure to have all of you here tonight for our meeting, December 9th, 2019. And can't wait to get to the business and to hear from most of you all tonight. But before we do that, we've got a couple of other little items to take care of. And we're going to begin first tonight with a special proclamation. And Mayor McBrayer, I will let you handle that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'll apologize for my voice tonight. It's just about gone. Joe, you had no idea so many people would come out for a proclamation. Joe, I'm going to ask you to step up here with me, and we'll have all your students come up here with you as well. They can stand with you while we read this. So this was kind of a surprise for Joe. It's not anymore. He thought he was coming to speak about the downtown. Chibonets, correct?
Yes.
Okay. From now on, I'm calling you Master Joe.
Yes, right.
Whereas North Star Martial Arts was founded by Master Joe Chibonets in 1988 in Homewood, Alabama. And whereas North Star Martial Arts was originally intended to be an outreach ministry, but it quickly grew from a few families to more than several hundred families from Homewood and the surrounding areas. And whereas North Star Martial Arts is a martial arts program designed to bring together life skills, physical development, and mental balance through the traditional Korean art of Tang Soodoo. And whereas North Star Martial Arts teaches biblical principles rooted in discipline, respect, and self-control, the mission statement is enter to change, leave to make a difference. And whereas North Star Martial Arts former students are still involved in the school's ministry as teams of karate students serve on mission trips to Guatemala, Costa Rica, Venezuela, as well as Alabama, Kentucky, Florida, and other southeastern states. And whereas the city of Homewood recognizes North Star Martial Arts, all individuals that have distinguished themselves in their career endeavors. So now therefore I Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the city of Homewood, and on behalf of all of our citizens hereby recognize North Star Martial Arts for its notable service to this city and highly commend Master Joe for the manner in which he carries out his duties and responsibilities. So Joe, thank you on behalf of Homewood. Y'all want to come right out here? And all of us short people to get up front.
I'm short.
Good. See them there?
All right, y'all want to do a big Tung Su?
Tung Su!
All right. One, two, three, ready?
Tung Su!
North Star!
Thank you, guys. Okay, thanks again, ladies. Thanks, y'all.
I kind of wanted to stay to protect me a little bit, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, thank you all for being here tonight. We do have an overflowing crowd tonight, to say the least. And because of that, just for safety's sake, I just want to point out exits to everyone, just as a matter of safety. And I've got fire officials here who are a little bit nervous, and we can all understand them doing their job. There are three exits to my right, to your left, one, two, three. And there are two exits to your left, one, two. And I know we'll have orderly exits at the appropriate time, but just wanted to, as a matter of caution, point that out to everyone. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order, December 9th, 2019. And we're going to begin with an invocation and our pledge of allegiance with our invocation from Bo Secres.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, I just thank you for this evening, God. And God, most of all, I thank you for you and your son. God, I thank you that you brought us all here together for this opportunity, Father God, to do good. And Father God, right now, I ask you, Lord, to please... Lord, I speak for peace, Father God, tonight. I speak for clarity, Lord. And Lord, I also ask, Lord, that you bless the businesses of our great city, Father God, and you bless the residents, Father God. You've blessed us with an abundance, Father God, and I pray that your favor continues over our city and over the good people that work and live here. So Father God, I ask you tonight, Lord, for let everyone that tonight that has an opportunity to speak, Father God, let them be slow to speak and swift to hear, Father God. God, I ask you, Lord, like I said, for peace to be in this place tonight. And God, let us come together in unity, Father. And Lord, I ask that you be with the council, Father God. You be with our mayor. You be with all of our dignitaries here tonight, Father God. Lord, we thank you and we praise you. And Lord, we look forward to what good will come from tonight. And it's in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bo. All right, we'll begin with roll call. Melody?
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
And Mr. Wright?
Here.
Everybody's present. Yeah, of course.
Thank you. And I'll first begin with entertaining a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes from November 18, 2019, by Mr. Wolverton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wyatt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a few board vacancies and appointments to take up first. Ward Five Municipal Housing Code Abatement Board nomination, that period has closed, and I believe we have one candidate. Is that right?
We do, and I would like to nominate Zach Isbell.
All right, so we have a motion for Miss Andrus for Zach Isbell to fill the Ward Five Municipal Housing Code Abatement Board position. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Isbell is so appointed, and Melody, you'll let him know. Couple others. We have a Ward Four Arts Advisory Council nomination. Actually, if I'm not mistaken, we need to open this up. We had a candidate but didn't quite get the application in in time, so we're going to extend or reopen the nomination for the Ward Four Arts Advisory Council position until December 16th without objection. Next, we have the Park Board at Large nomination, which has also been closed, and we had one applicant to reappoint incumbent Michael Murray as the Park Board at Large member. And I'll entertain a motion for that. By Mr. McCloskey. Second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so Mr. Murray will be reappointed, actually, to that position. And last, we have the Ward Three Cable Commission nomination. We're going to actually have to reopen this one and extend it, and we're going to reopen and extend this one to January 13th without objection. All right, that will get us... We have one item to add to tonight's agenda. It's going to be 081219, which is a request to authorize the mayor to sign an ALDOT Eighteenth Street Project amended funding supplemental agreement for Eighteenth Street revitalization from 28th Avenue South to north of Rosedale Avenue. And this is going to be added to other new business tonight. And so with that one item being added to the agenda, I will ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
Subway.
Second.
By Mr. Higginbotham. Second by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, so the agenda tonight is approved as amended. All right, first item is consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Subway.
By Mr. McCloskey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wyatt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be approved. All right, so let's go ahead and get into the old business agenda and to tonight's item, 121019, a public hearing tonight for consideration to rezone the Homewood Downtown District from multiple zonings classifications to three new mixed-use categories, low-intensity district, medium-intensity district, and high-intensity district to implement recommendations contained within the approval of the Heart of Homewood Downtown Master Plan, the applicant being the city of Homewood in coordination with the Regional Planning Commission. And the owners are multiple public and private owners of this property. Okay, can you hear? Okay, I will really try to eat the microphone here. My apologies to you. All right, so we do have tonight's 121019 item coming up. And before we begin, let me just say a couple of words before I turn it over to the committee report from Planning and Development. First of all, sincerely, thank you all for being out here tonight. This is a tribute in and of itself for seeing this turnout for whatever issue, and most importantly, for our beloved downtown issue. We are looking forward to hearing from each and every one of you as long as it takes, with a few limitations, which I'll talk to you all about that in just a second, so we can try to make this efficient and appropriate for us to not be here till 3:00 in the morning. First of all, how we got here, I just wanted to mention that how we got here, so you can hear from the council, there's been lots of discussion about this over, really, over the past two years. And we're going to talk to you a little bit more about the history of how we got here, but I'm going to give you just a general thumbnail sketch. And this really comes about as a result of what I have described as a kaleidoscope of zoning districts that we have in downtown Homewood. We have 13 different zoning districts in Homewood. And that's not a good thing for downtown to have. It presents all kinds of problems, and I'll let the experts speak to some of that as to why you don't want to have 13 zoning districts in your downtown area. And as a result of that, in an effort to do something about having 13 zoning districts in your downtown area, we conferred with the Regional Planning Commission and came up with a plan that's been going on now for about two years to change and put in place protected zoning that will protect our downtown from being exposed to problems we don't want to happen to our downtown. This is about protection and preservation. And the Regional Planning Commission has put together a plan along those lines. They went out for surveys among people, and we've had several public input sessions over the past, I'll say, two years, and they can speak to more details on exactly all the work that's been done to try to garner the thoughts and the hopes and desires of our community. This is y'all's plan. This is the plan to keep Homewood like it is. And that's what was attempted to do. And this plan was designed for that purpose because, and I'll say particularly, at least Peter Wright will say, particularly for Eighteenth Street. That street and what it means and what it says about our town and what it has meant and said about our town for decades, particularly now that it continues to thrive in such a wonderful way, nobody wants to change that. We do not want... We don't want something different. We want to keep what we have, and who wouldn't? It is a jewel. And with 13 zoning districts, that was what we were looking at. Because Homewood, as you all know, is an incredibly popular, thriving place right now. Development can come here and probably is going to come here, just from a pure standpoint of capitalism. And we want to be in position that we don't have 13 zoning districts that will expose us to problems from developers coming in and making our town be something that we don't want it to be. This is not us trying to change what it is. We want to keep it, and we want to put in place guideposts and restrictions so that we can make sure we keep it. Because we believe with 13 zoning districts that we expose our city to development risk and developers coming in and being able to legally do things to our city from a development standpoint that none of us wants. And that's what this is about when we come forth with a 13-district plan, reducing it down to three. Now, does it mean it was perfect from the very beginning? I don't think so. And this is where y'all's input has been invaluable. It's been invaluable from the outset, when we heard from you all, some of you all, 18 months ago. And it's been invaluable from when we hear from you all 18 minutes ago, just about. And we really look forward to hearing your thoughts tonight. Because that's what we want to keep, this wonderful town, which, guys, this is a testament. Look at this. This is a testament to what that town means to us. And believe me, we know it and agree with you. With that, I'm going to go through this. Let me just mention a couple of rules about our public hearing, because we have so many of you, and we really do want to hear, I don't care if it's 70 of you. We're going to hear from everybody. But we're going to limit it to two minutes for each of you. I'm going to have a timer here, and we're going to try to stick to it as much as we can. And please, there's going to be... We are not going to vote on this tonight for obvious reasons of what we may receive tonight and where we go from here. But we do want to hear from you all and look forward to that opportunity, and I hope you all do as well. It's going to be two minutes a person. We are going to keep this focused, and I will insist on it, that it's going to remain focused on this zoning issue. If there's going to be any personal issues that come up, you're going to be cut off. We are not going down that path. One iota tonight. One iota. No flexibility. We are going to remain on the subject. We will, in effort to try to address some questions that come up after your two-minute period, or if you go 30 seconds, all the better, to let our experts from the Regional Planning Commission and from placemakers, and I'll... We'll introduce you all in just a second. Britt, if you can help me with that. Introduce you all in just a second to answer your questions after your period is up. And we're going to try to make this move quickly. Doesn't mean that we won't get bogged down, but we really want to try to go through and make this work. But this is going to be a civil proceeding, and we are not going to go beyond the two minutes, with the exception of questions to be answered by Regional Planning Commission and placemakers, and perhaps maybe some city council members if they have some answers. And with that, we'll continue on this item. And first, we're going to begin, as part of our public hearing, with a report from our Planning and Development Committee where this item was discussed last week, and to Mr. Thames.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a quick comment before Mr. Thames does that. I just wanted to bring to people's attention, there are about six or seven chairs here in the front that are empty, if there's anyone...
There are about six or seven chairs here in the front that are empty, if there's anyone who would like to take a seat who's standing, or anyone that's sitting on the floor that would like to move into these chairs. I thought we might want to give people just a few seconds to do that if they were interested, because I note, obviously, there are a number of people who are standing, and I just wanted to make people aware who may not be aware of it.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Thames?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Last week, the PND Committee met, and we heard a presentation from Lindsey Puckett with the Regional Planning Commission. We also had a lengthy discussion with residents. The committee voted five to zero to recommend referring this item back to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing this evening. Motion was made by Counselor Wyatt and seconded by Counselor Andrus. Just to echo what you said, Mr. Wright, thank you for everyone to be here this evening. And I did want to thank all of the residents and business owners that have taken the time to give us input, be it phone calls, email, or especially in person. I think a lot of us up here have spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks visiting with people in the downtown area. I mean, it could have been a door-to-door where we knocked and walked in, and people were generous enough to give us their time in the moment, all the way to scheduled meetings. And while placemakers had some recommended amendments that they... that we discussed last week in committee, subsequent meetings that we've been having with many of you over the course of the last week, I believe, have brought a few other recommendations to the table that placemakers will make tonight that I feel like have really moved us in the right direction of, as Peter said, protection, especially on the Eighteenth Street corridor, which I know is so important to all of us. So again, five to zero without recommendation, and we'll now hear from Lindsey Puckett with the Regional Planning Commission.
Good evening, councilors. I too like the mayor. I hope that my voice will hold off after getting over a cold. So when I first met you in a Planning and Development Committee meeting, we started the process of scoping the different elements that would be included in a downtown Homewood master plan and zoning project update. You desired to simplify the complex number of zoning categories in downtown Homewood and be proactive in guiding future development. Therefore, city leaders started making it clear to us that the new zoning code for downtown Homewood should be designed to clarify regulations and simplify the development process. And the intent was also to preserve the character of the downtown area by imposing height restrictions on future development. So in 2017, the city of Homewood contracted with us, the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham, to develop the downtown master plan and the zoning code update. Both of these products were included in a combined scope of work. In September 2017, the work for the downtown master plan commenced, and the master plan was adopted 13 months later, October 2018, by your planning commission, and then endorsed by you all a few weeks after that. During the development of the master plan, we received over 2,500 comments from the public via two rounds of public meetings and three online surveys. And input was used to establish a vision concept for downtown Homewood that is pedestrian-friendly and incorporates mixed-use development at a range of scales that also respects the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Many of the public comments that we received during the master plan process spoke to the need for an updated zoning code for downtown. Comments were submitted such as stronger zoning regulations are needed to guide scale, general character, and site planning decisions. At the end of last year, the Regional Planning Commission hired placemakers to be our subconsultant for the new code, because placemakers is nationally known expert in code writing. The process to develop the downtown district code began in January when placemakers released their recommendations report, and then met with the members of the planning commission in February to discuss the annotated outline of the code. Two rounds of public meetings were held in April and June to obtain public comments, which coincided with the release of the first two drafts of the code. Work sessions were held with business owners, property owners, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the design community, as well as work sessions with the planning commission and city council. A final draft of the code was published in early August, and in late October, the legal notices were mailed to property owners to notify them of the planning commission and city council public hearings. Since September of 2017, there have been 3,328 unique visitors to the Heart of Homewood Plan website that we set up. And since January of this year, with the beginning of the rezoning process, there have been 2,000 unique visitors to the website. The Regional Planning Commission has sent out 12 eBlasts since January using our MailChimp software, and eBlasts were sent to a list of about 655 subscribers. The Homewood Star has published at least seven articles regarding the proposed rezoning, in addition to another 12 that they published during the downtown master plan process. The existing zoning in downtown Homewood includes 13 zoning districts, and six of those are commercial-specific districts. And they each have their own set of regulations, height limits, setbacks, and land uses. With the goal to simplify the six commercial zoning districts, the proposed downtown district code establishes three districts, low, medium, and high-intensity districts, which stair-steps the intensity away from the downtown core as it approaches the adjacent neighborhoods. So now I would like to invite Susan Henderson of placemakers to finish our presentation by discussing some of the recommended changes that the council should consider in the final ordinance of the code. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Good evening, councilors. Mr. President, I think your... I want to leave this map here for just a moment, because I think your statement regarding the kaleidoscope of your downtown zoning is very graphically compelling, and then when you see the map, you understand how factual that is. And to just mention the problems associated with the kaleidoscope is the nuances are so small between one zoning district and the other that there... And the uses are so compatible, really, since they're all basically commercial uses. You have one zone currently that is for office only. And that degree of separation in pod zoning is... It was a best practice in 1930, and its life cycle of best practice ended in about 1980. So it's... It had a time and a place where it was very appropriate in separating industrial and residential. And because of the complexity of cities, and especially historic places like downtown Homewood, that sort of separation of use doesn't reflect the inherent character of your place. And that's one reason that you recommended, through all of the public engagement to the Regional Planning Commission, the stair-step of intensities rather than focusing on use. So I just want to speak tonight... One of your citizens gave me this introductory statement. She said, "Start with 'you told us,' and then list what you're changing." Because I think that is the thing that we can't emphasize enough, is whether it's your professional staff, you all as elected officials, you're appointed planning commissioners, but most importantly, your citizen advocates and your business leaders, that if we don't craft the code together, it is so much less than it really can be. And it becomes... What happened in the 1930s that was so... Created so much havoc in cities over the years was, frankly, zoning was new, and people didn't know how to use it. And what cities would do is essentially Xerox the town next door, because it is open source, and there's no copyright. And so what we see... I see zoning codes in Spanish colonial villages that looks like it came from Muncie, Indiana, and it probably did. And so it's the fact that you all have been so actively engaged in taking ownership of this, even in these last weeks since planning commission, when it became such a real concern in the community. The nuances of those changes has made this list of recommendations that I personally believe make your code much better. And so I think I can, with my public hat on, my professional hat on, say with all confidence that I highly recommend that you consider these changes. that the protection of Eighteenth Street character, that was, we've heard, we heard that early, and we heard it often. And one of your local architects did this series of sketches. They actually assessed your code today, and what you could do, the image on the far left shows that your current zoning permits new parking lots in front. So, this is the corner of Reese, the northwest corner of Reese and Eighteenth, and if that building burned or, or something catastrophic happened to it, this is how it could be replaced. So, you can have a big parking lot out front. Well, parking is a real issue downtown, and we'll get to that, so maybe that's not so bad. But that is where the pedestrian experience to the north begins, and so I would make a case that it's a degradation of the character of Eighteenth Street. The other thing you could do, like the image in the middle, is by right today, you can build three stories. You can build 35 feet. And so that is if any, any property owner on Eighteenth Street today, without asking permission, could replace their building with a three-story building, and they could do it at, right at the back of the sidewalk, because that's your setback, and that's a very appropriate setback on a main street. The proposed zoning is the image on the far right, and it is a two-and-a-half story building. It's basically two stories with an inhabited attic. I'm sorry, sir, do you have a question?
Yeah, do you have this document you showed?
Yes.
I can't, I can't zoom in?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Audience can see it.
Oh, your brightness. Can we control the brightness in the back?
But you can go ahead. I just wanted to.
Okay.
I'm looking through my packet.
I'm sorry. We finished it at the last moment. So, the building in the far right is a, is a two-and-a-half story building. The height is approximately the same. You'll lose, you'll lose a foot in height with the proposed zoning, and you'll lose a little area. But it requires the parking behind the building, and it also requires 50% clear windows at the street level at a minimum. And the other interesting thing about your existing zoning today, someone could come in and build a blank wall along Eighteenth Street if they wanted to, and enter from the parking in the rear, and suddenly you would have this massive blank wall facing Eighteenth. And so I think it's only when you look closely at your code that you begin to understand that you have the potential to damage character today, exactly as it is. And so that was one of the, the largest comments that we heard through the entire process, is protect our character as much as possible. We have, just from a meeting this morning, we have a new recommendation that for all buildings facing Eighteenth Street, that they have to have a storefront facade. So that means that they, it may be an office, it could even be a service. We're not controlling the use with that great of, of control, but, but we're saying you must have a storefront. Essentially, it means that the buildings become retail-ready. They can convert to retail, and they, they create an active streetscape. One other thing that we're not recommending for tonight, but that could be considered for future text amendments perhaps, is a number of your business owners are very concerned about retail, residential uses on Eighteenth Street. And while we're not recommending that here, because it's too big of a shift, we would encourage you to consider it in the future. So, there was a question that came up about the requirement for, for glass, and people were concerned that that was going to make all of their, their facades illegal. And we actually came up with a 70% storefront glass and the basic 50% glazing. That came out of, Counselor Higginbotham called that to our attention in our very first meeting, where he said that the, the glazing requirements in West Homewood were just too high. And so we, we lowered them much, much below what we would have recommended otherwise, and it was based on going out and doing a survey of Eighteenth Street and doing calculations. And so the Hilt Flobber Building is one of the most, the most masonry-forward buildings on the street. And we did the calculation. You measure it between two feet above grade to 10 feet above grade, and the shopfront glazing on this particular building is something like 83.97%. So, it is well above the required standard by the code. Oh, yeah, 83.97%, I actually remember that. So then there was another series of, of parking changes that came out of the planning commission, or recommendations that came out of the planning commission hearing. The number-one concern that we heard from the public that night was about the need for parking, and the success of your retail and your, and your dining venues, that they rely very heavily on accessible parking. And so we actually came back with an entire required parking series that we would recommend that you consider. More importantly than this, and, and I'm very pleased by all of the information you've given us over the last few weeks, the biggest thing that, that the city can do and should do is invest in a parking management plan, and I know you're in the process of doing that, and I applaud you for that work. So, we are suggesting that parking is required. Now, today, all of the buildings on Eighteenth, the first-floor uses are excluded from requiring parking, and we would recommend that you keep that exclusion, but should anyone build a two-story building, if there were something catastrophic, that there is parking required for the uses upstairs. A number of people expressed deep concern, as I mentioned before, about the residential uses and the possibility of that on Eighteenth. And with the size of those parcels, both horizontally and in-depth, and they're all built out 100%, and if, if you rebuilt a building, you would have to use about half of your available site to meet the parking requirements for an upstairs. And that really just isn't, it's not going to make a developer's perform a work. So, we feel like this is a naturally occurring control device for those who are concerned about residential uses on Eighteenth. There were a number of people at the planning commission that were very, and then also, again, at the PND Committee, that were very concerned about legal non-conforming status and what that would do to their properties if they fell into this bucket. And it was, it was a very good critique, and we are recommending that you consider adding the following language. We use it in, in many places where we write code, and it adds under your Section B, under non-conforming, a new section that would talk about modifications. And essentially, what it says is that you can do modifications to a non-conforming building as long as it brings it closer into compliance with the code. So, what that means, if your building is setback too far, you can still add on to it as long as you bring that addition closer. You don't have to move the whole building closer. What that would mean is if for some reason you didn't have enough window area on the front of your building, you could add one window if you chose to without having to redo your entire facade. So, it gives you a tremendous amount of flexibility in maintaining and even expanding your building, your building over time, without having the, the non-compliant status being a problem. There was one gentleman last week at the committee meeting from, who had a business on Crescent, and he was talking about the fact that it's designated as a B Street, and it says that the front setback, currently the code says, the front setback is from eight feet to 24 feet maximum. And we had done a cursory review in, in Google Earth that was obviously not accurate enough, and so the Regional Planning Commission went back in and, and measured in GIS, and the 30 feet, it's actually, the average is 29, and so to have a little room for flexibility, we're recommending that you consider making that maximum front setback 30 feet instead of 24 feet. And there have been a couple of map change requests, and I anticipate that you'll get more of these, and I just want to say this today. As someone who loves codes, and I love the effects of codes and what you can do with them, I know I'm weird. I know that's a problem. I have. But, but I just have to say, there's no pride of authorship. And, and when we leave you a code, we hope you treat it like a living, breathing entity. Your code should evolve over time. It should respond to market changes. It should respond to requests from your citizens. It should respond to direction from your planning commission. And so I, I hope that you'll consider your code and your map to be evolving documents. With that being said, the, the properties that are currently zoned C4B are high-rise along Highway 31. Those, a number of those property owners requested that they go into the high-intensity instead of the medium-intensity. And so what that's doing is it's making a shift from your current highest zoning district to the proposed highest zoning district, which is very logical and rational. And because it's adjacent to Highway 31, that the width of that right, right-of-way provides a significant, significant buffer to the residences across the road. Just this morning, a new request was made that the area, that second red box that is along 29th, of the small one-story retail uses on the south side of 29th, that that area was currently recommended to be high-intensity to match SoHo. But really, those areas are facing, for the most part, your parking lot. And because they are of a unique character and a very delicate scale, it seemed appropriate if you are building this gateway to Eighteenth, from a character preservation perspective. I could respect that request, that those properties are more appropriate to be medium-intensity rather than high-intensity. We also would recommend that you would consider doing the requirement for storefronts in that area as well to take care of the concern that it might flip to residential. Then there was a nuance to the restrictions on uses per district that actually, I'm sorry, this is technical, but Table 6 controls uses in their area to try to assure that there's enough space on-site for on-site parking. And so that is the reason, for example, that in the low-intensity and the medium-intensity under office and service, you see these restricted areas for, for development. And there are a few larger lots within, within those districts that it dis, it strongly disadvantages. And so we went back and did a survey, our, the Regional Planning Commission did a survey of your median lot widths and lot areas, and we recommend that you consider waiving that restriction for lots that are 125% of the median and above, because when they're that large, they can accommodate their parking and still build a larger building. There was one typo that, that someone caught, and that is, under the use table, the restaurants should have, in low-intensity, should be permitted rather than restricted. And then there was another suggestion that was made at PND last week about the streetscape improvements that are required. And right now, it's, it says, lots that are 100 feet and larger have to make streetscape improvements if there is new development. And because there are a number of parcels in Crescent and Reese and Linden that are right on the border of that, just to be, make sure there's enough space where they don't all have to do the streetscape improvements, the request was to clearly state that it's greater than 100 feet is the breaking point. So we recommend that you would consider that. And then finally, one big concern was the waivers and interpretive review that was suggested in the administration. We were recommending that you give a 20% dimensional waiver for specific issues like something that's site-specific, and that would give your professional staff the ability to adjust setbacks a bit. People were uncomfortable with that and felt like it gave too much flexibility to staff, and so we recommend that you delete the administrative waivers section. And that is the end of the presentation. If you have any questions for me.
Well, I'll turn to council if you have any questions right now. I mean, certainly I'm looking forward to the public hearing and everyone's comments, and I hope you will stand by for response to any of these comments that, that could require your expertise. So, with that, we will begin tonight's public hearing, again, with a two-minute limitation, sticking to the zoning issues. And again, we will try to respond to questions after your, your two-minute time is up, if appropriate. Some of you just want to make, may want just to make comments and such. So please, I don't, have we started a sign-in sheet yet?
President, I have, I have one sheet here, but I thought earlier there were more than one. I don't know if somebody just grabbed one sign in it, or, does anybody have one?
Okay, well, if we don't have a-
If your name's not on this one, we'll need you to sign in. I thought when I first came here-
Okay, so just, just, if you do want to speak, all you have to do, you are going to have to sign in with your name and address, and then come to the podium. It's that simple. And we certainly look forward to hearing from each and every one of you that wishes to speak. So, with that, I don't know who is first up, but-
I have a, on this sheet, I have, this is the only sheet I have right now, is George Williams.
George Williams.
I have not had a chance to adjust this based on what I just heard, so I'm going to prepare. Okay, how's this? All right. I haven't had a chance to adjust this since what I've just heard, so I'm going to deliver it as written. I'm a 42-year resident of Homewood. At the end of my statement, I have one question for the council.
What's his name?
I like a lot of the master plan. However, the new master plan does not protect the shops facing Eighteenth Street from 28th Avenue to Oxmoor adequately. Eighteenth Street draws shoppers from the entire region because it's charming, unique, nostalgic, and full of, and full of one-of-a-kind locally-owned shops and restaurants. It's an economic magnet, a major source of the city's revenue. It's Homewood's differentiating factor, the only thing that makes your master plan different from similar master plans all across the country. It's a factor that will make prospective merchants and residents choose your downtown. But what would happen if a property owner decides to replace an existing building, or what if the greater-than-50% of restoration cost rule gets triggered due to fire or some other calamity? The new building would have to meet all of the master plan's design guidelines. Consequently, it would have a modern 21st-century building. Once that happens, the likelihood that other buildings will follow is high. If that proceeds as one could imagine, the shops that characterize today's Eighteenth Street would have to close. Everything that our shop owners have built over the years will be gone, and hundreds of jobs would be lost. And your new master plan's differentiating factor would be gone. I believe there should be an additional zoning district specific for, for all of Eighteenth Street from at least Oxmoor to 28th, a district that would preserve the buildings along with their facades, one that will increase the probability that the locally-owned businesses will be able to continue to afford the rent in these buildings. It should have a review board to enforce restrictions on substantially changing existing building facades.
Thanks, Mr. Williams. I don't know if there's anything to respond. Thank you for your comments.
We have Jane Reed Ross.
Good evening. Hello, I'm Jane Reed Ross. I've lived in Homewood for 30 years and have witnessed numerous developments. I appreciate we are having this discussion. First, with the master plan- First, with the master plan and then with the zoning changes this year. It is important that we have a plan in place and that zoning reflect that plan. I approve of the following. One, enforcing the height restrictions for downtown buildings. And two, simplifying the zoning categories from, the commercial zoning categories from six to three. Changing the building height limits from 11 stories to five stories is in keeping with the current scale in Homewood. SoHo, Aloft, Hallman Hill are all five stories. We do not need to have a taller structure like the Regent's building. And we also need to preserve the limits on 18th Street to two stories. The master planning and zoning changes is a process that is ongoing. It requires stakeholder input and has been underway for several years now. This timeframe is completely normal. The best plans produced are those where the community works together and discusses issues in a civil way. We have not always had the opportunity to discuss the direction of development in Homewood. SoHo was built without any public input. Since then, people have made an effort to provide comments on large developments. Hallman Hill was originally proposed higher, and with public input, the complex was lowered to five stories and redesigned to better suit Homewood. With the proposed zoning changes, Homewood could be proactive with five stories being the maximum height, and not reactive with the need to meet about the potential 11 stories.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
That's it? All right.
Thank you.
We have Stephanie Banks.
I've been proud and pleased to be a part of this process through the surveys and meetings. This is the most input I've felt like I've had in my 19-plus years as a Homewood resident. And I know that additional input is still continuing. I support a simplified downtown master plan. And after its passage, I look forward to putting away my figurative torch and pitchfork that I have brought to these meetings in the past when a major development appears on our horizon, starting for me with shaving floors and heights off Hallman Hill, to more recently, with concerns about the height of the hotel. Development should not go unchecked, at least not in our town. I said that very thing years ago in an interview to replace one of my councilpeople who'd relocated. One of the councilpeople at the time, when I mentioned development, responded, "We don't development, develop," to which I replied, "But you zone." Therefore, I am very happy we have a proposed plan versus piecemeal reactions, as has happened in the past. I would also like for an additional layer of protection for the council as a next step to put some basic, not overly restrictive, commercial design review in place, like our neighbors in Mountain Brook and parts of Birmingham. That would be the icing on the cake of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And next?
Jerry Fritz.
First of all, thank you, council, for leading the way in this transition to bringing some direction with growth in our city. The thing I spoke at the planning commission about was traffic concerns. And as we tried to restrict 18th Street, especially in the area around the post office and the proposed new hotel, I understand there's a traffic study underway or going to be started. And if there's ever a bottleneck in traffic, then the side streets and other routes become more inhabited with traffic. And I live very close to Central Avenue and Oxmoor Road, which I think you would agree is a pretty high-volume area at high-volume times. And we've experienced some problems with that. And I think it would be, behoove the council to get the traffic study in hand and look at how that might affect our neighboring areas as we look at changing density levels within the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy, is it McGuire? Is it Betsy McGuire? McGuire, okay.
All right, so just try to get your mouth very close to the microphone. Very almost like you're kissing it.
Okay. Yuck. Thank you all for serving our city so well, and I mean that sincerely. I've been involved with the Heart of Homewood Plan since it began two years ago, and I attended all the open public information sessions and commented extensively online. I want to say to you and all the merchants and residents here tonight that the first and foremost, the Heart of Homewood Plan is intended, as you said, Peter, to protect and preserve the heart of the Heart of Homewood, which is 18th Street. And first and foremost, unequivocally, is to support our local merchants and discourage in any way legally possible to keep out national chains and big-box stores. I have said repeatedly that when this happens, it's the beginning of the end of what defines downtown and what makes it unique, which is independently on merchants and restaurants. And on that, I think most of us agree. The plan moves us forward in this direction for preserving 18th and setting a course for future development for the rest of downtown. It does so exponentially with the shift to district zoning and stories instead of height, with height restrictions. Does this plan perhaps need tweaking so that we can ensure our primary goals are met? It appears so. And do we have the merchants, and do we have the merchants and residents involved and interested in making this the best plan it can be for our growth? Clearly, because of the number of people here tonight. And do we have a consultant that can help us bring the expertise we do with placemakers? And not everyone is going to be happy with the results, but I feel like we are very close. I urge you to postpone the vote till after the holidays. And I urge you to continue the consultancy with placemakers if we're able to. I do not think we have the in-house expertise to do it. And I just thank you and encourage you to continue to support a comprehensive plan that shapes our future development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, two Joneses, Martha and Thurman.
I've just got a few questions and a moment for the council. I understand you've hired an economic developer. And Mr. President spent 10 minutes telling us how we weren't going to make any changes on 18th Street. And I was just wondering, what were the terms? Was he under contract? Is he paid a salary? Is he paid on commission? Are there any state laws requiring the hiring of this person?
I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about. We don't have an economic developer.
You didn't hire somebody to do-
Oh, you're talking about Dan. Yeah, well, he is a, he is a, he is a city-wide developer. He's certainly not doing anything at all to ever touch or change 18th Street, period.
Okay, is he under commission, or did you hire him for salary?
I think he is. He is, he's under a contract.
Okay. Thank you.
You're, absolutely. Thank you.
Do Martha Jones, do you want to speak, Martha? Okay. Are you Martha? Okay.
Was Doug Jones responsible for the development, Lane Park, for the Lane Park development in Mountain Brook?
It's Doug Neal.
Doug Neal, I'm sorry. Was he?
It's his company, Doug Neal.
Are you aware that the development in Lane Park has been criticized and not considered successful? And that over $20 million of revenue that was supposed to come in with that did not? And how do you think his efforts will change with this city than it will be different than from what he did with Mountain Brook?
Mrs. Jones, he was not involved in that. He was in a whole different division of the company. They have two companies. He's in the communities company. The commercial company did that, so he was never involved in that.
But do you agree that that's a failure?
Well, I think even our merchants would tell you that it's a failure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, Ms. Salter.
Sorry, Bernice Hawkins.
Bernice Hawkins.
Hi, I've lived in Homewood for over 35 years. Like everybody else, we love Homewood, but unfortunately, the last 10 to 15 years, we've seen a lot of changes we don't like, starting with residential. But as far as downtown and the whispering of having the residential areas above the commercial areas, that's just a nightmare to me. I mean, I see downtown Birmingham, we don't want to be downtown Birmingham. What are we going to do with all those people? And what are we going to do with the cars? And who's going to move into those residential people? They're going to have students from Sanford and UAB is, I mean, I just, that's just a nightmare to even think about that. And, I mean, they say it's my vision, it's Homewood's vision, I'm Homewood. It's not my vision. It's probably not the majority of the people here tonight's vision, to have residential above the retail.
Thank you very much.
Is it Bobby, is it Seibels? Oh, Babbie, I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's Babbie Stieslinger. So, I've met with Jennifer, Brett, and placemakers, and I think, I think they get the whole picture for everybody that's here. They get it that we need parking. That's number one on the master plan. The one thing I am really confused about, there's two things I'm kind of confused, maybe a lot. Okay, so I'm on 18th Street, and right now, it's currently zoned C-4A, which is retail-only. Is that correct? Does everybody know? I think it is, C-4A. And that's retail-only, right? So, what retail, we're talking about doing mixed-use, what retail store, aside from restoration hardware, goes up? So, I looked at all, what all goes under C-4, barber shops, bike shops, banks. How many of those are high-rise? There's a reason why they're not high-rise. It doesn't work. So, I'm not sure I understand, you know, I feel like we were given a concession of saying, "We're bringing the height down, but we're going to turn it into mixed-use." I don't think there is a concession here to be made, because a bank's not going to come in and take that place and go up. My owner does not want to go up. She's made it clear. She does not want to sell, she does not want to go up. But keeping it C-4A, nobody's going to go up with that. It's not economically sound at all, because I can't see a barber shop going up, nobody's going up. So, I don't understand why we don't just leave it C-4A. Is there an answer? Walter, you're looking at me.
I don't have any answer to that. Office is allowed, is specifically located above the first story.
But it wouldn't make much financial sense for a developer, is that right?
Oh, that's right.
That is correct. So, is there a reason not to leave it at C-4A? Because I feel like I'm fairly protected there, or my building is, or the street.
Susan, we had a, specifically with Babbie today, I think we had a really good meeting. Can you, and we added some changes, facade changes, things like that. Can you sort of go into-
Yeah. Oh, no, you stay, you'll have, you'll have questions on my answers. I know you.
Go into while you're proposing those changes, especially coming out of our meeting this
morning.
Okay. So, I think there's a couple of things. One is, the biggest thing is, if you look at the permitted uses in C-4A, you can do grocery stores, you can do liquor stores, you can do offices located above the first story of the building. And it already permits three stories. So, anybody could go, somebody could tear down your building, do retail in the first and two levels of office above. Now, that may or may not be marked, it may or may not be smart in the current market. It may or may not be smart in the current market with the price of office leases, but that is what's permissible today in your, in your zoning district. So, it has permitted, protected you in that it's reduced the number of stories you can build. And yes, you can still do resident, residential is the new use above what you can do there right now. And I suggest that you bring that forward as a text amendment.
Me bring it forward as a text amendment?
No, well, the city.
The city, yeah.
Your council will bring it forward as a text amendment.
As a text amendment to take out the residential?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, because I don't see anybody going up with an office space, especially if they can't meet the parking requirements.
Well, there are many places in which there are two-story retail options. There's also two-story dining options. And especially in a place that's as cool as Homewood, you get more of those creative types that are interested in doing something that breaks mold a little bit. But the biggest reason we didn't limit you to one story is because of the rights that the property owners already have.
I understand that part.
Yeah.
The rights of a property owner, if nobody, they did explain all that to us today. You can't change the rights of the property owner.
Right.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But meeting ADA requirements, which, you know, I already had one of those nasty lawyers come in and try and go after me, but, you know, you would have to put in an elevator to make it ADA.
Elevator, right.
So, if we leave it C-4, we're protected. Because nobody's going to come in, bust down my building, put in an elevator for upstairs, and then be able to meet parking requirements.
They're not going to do that in the way it's written right now either.
With mixed-
They still, yeah, they still have to meet ADA, they still have to meet the parking requirements for upstairs. So, we've added back onto the proposed zoning for recommendations for council to consider all of the limiting factors that you have protecting you today. So, basically, ADA is, ADA is in an entirely different realm, but that applies to everybody.
It does, right.
And so, because of ADA, though, and the requirement for the elevator for residential, you can't make that pencil with one story of residential.
So, basically, you're saying, throw it back, we're not going to vote tonight, throw it back, take out residential.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Paige Drummond.
Paige Drummond.
I'm just going to second that we would appreciate if this would pause until we all have a full understanding of the zoning and how it will affect our downtown. I've been, we've been in business in Homewood for 33 years, and it's a lovely place. We have people from all around the country. But if things change and developers come in, y'all, these individual stores, we will not be able to be here. We will not be able to afford all the beautification, all these new, new buildings. But if y'all would just pause and let everyone have a full understanding of what this, of what the zoning means. This is all brand-new, because unfortunately, we were never business owners on 18th Street, 29th Avenue. We were never approached, never knew anything about this. I realize that it was in the Homewood Star, but no one came around to us and said, "This is what's going on. As a retailer, you've been here for 33 years, you know, you guys might want to come and be a part." We didn't, it was all through the grapevine, intentional, I don't know, whatever. But just, if y'all would just pause and just let everyone understand fully what the ramifications are and will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Lamar Hart.
We can't hear you.
Cynthia Lamar Hart.
I heard you.
Good evening, Mr. Wright. Good evening, and thank you so much for this opportunity. I just want to say how impressed I am with the professionalism of this group and with the passion and commitment of the citizens and the merchants of Homewood. I wanted to bring up 28th Street between 19th and 18th, and I heard for the first time tonight, Susan, comment on a potential adjustment for 29th, which I think is a terrific step in the right direction for residents who live downtown already. So, I understand that there are at least two goals that catch my attention. I live at SoHo. Two goals that catch my attention are to maintain the character of downtown, which I certainly applaud, and to step down toward the residential areas. And as a SoHo resident, to have a five-story building across 28th from me is a step up and would create a UAB downtown Birmingham atmosphere for me and that sort of wind tunnel that I would have gone downtown if I wanted to live in. So, I think it's a terrific- So I think it's a terrific suggestion that you maintain the more delicate character at Twenty-Ninth by making that medium density, and I ask you to consider that also, because that is across from a parking lot. A building directly across the street from Soho North would be in our faces, a five-story building, and give it a very commercial feel. I also think it would detract from your town center feeling that you have so successfully built with this building here, and your town square is the heart of the community, to step up from that visually by allowing five-story buildings right there on Twenty-Eighth between Nineteenth and Eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Kelly West.
Thank you so much for your time and to everyone. I did not plan to speak at all, but I live in Soho. I can't tell what I'm looking at, I know you ladies prepared a presentation, I don't know what I'm looking at. I have no, everything is completely confusing. I mean, it just, it's dogfounding how confusing it is. And I have to take issue with one lady that spoke and said that Soho was built without the input of residents, future residents. That could not be further from the truth. I don't know where you got your information from, but the two builders at Soho are, we're all lucky to have them with us. And, again, the sample email blast, the sources that you used, it, I never got anything, no one I know did. So, and again, to me, it is still completely confusing what we're doing, and how, and the issue of these storefronts having to be in, whatever, the facades of the storefronts, I thought all the storefronts had facades, and I just don't think that that money is worth it. And to me, the other issue is to deal with parking. I mean, it's hard to measure this, but there's so many people that don't come to Homewood until late in the afternoon, or they won't come because there's nowhere to park. I mean, it's just simply, there is nowhere to park. And I really appreciate just letting me speak.
Wonderful, thank you.
And thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Sue Graffos?
Hello. I know I'm familiar to all of you, I'm back. Anyway, to sort of tag on to what Paige said, I want to know, where did you all place the public hearing signs to notify the business owners about the rezoning for downtown district for the November Planning Commission Public Hearing? And also, was that required? And then I have another one, is if you all were voting tonight, how many of you would recuse yourself from the vote? Thank you.
Barbara Schilling?
Yep, we can answer. We can answer that question. We can answer. I believe everyone will vote except for our newest councillor. I think everyone will vote except for John.
Everyone will vote?
Will be able to vote on the item, there will only be one abstention. You asked?
My last question is if, if you, who would recuse themselves?
Yes.
And it would be John Harden?
Yes, yes, Mr. Wright.
Okay. And what about the signing? Why, why would you accuse yourself?
Because he's, he works for a real estate company, and he can speak for himself, but...
Conflict of interest?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, where did you all place?
Then we had the issue of the Planning Commission notice, I really don't have the answer to that. Mr. Kendrick, I don't know, do you have an answer to that, Mr. Kendrick?
The answer was that every property owner was given notice as required by state.
We can't hear you.
Every property owner was given notice as required by state law.
The business owners, the business owners.
The ordinance was published and posted here at City Hall for about six weeks.
So you think all the property owners and business owners should drop by City Hall to see if there's a zoning?
I would assume a property owner would tell you that.
I'm not a property owner, I'm a business owner.
I understand that the property owner might have given you notice of that, we don't know what that is.
You hear these people, I'm just asking why we were not notified.
Every property owner in the City of Homewood is affected by this zoning, was given notice, a mail, at least on one occasion, sometimes two.
How many people here that are business and/or property owners were notified? Business and/or property owners were notified.
We've had a series of public input sessions for over, what, two years now? You heard the history.
I'm just asking about the November Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Is, did Ms. Snell give you that?
No, she did not.
The question was, or the answer is?
I don't need somebody to give me questions.
I assumed you were reading that.
Well, I am, because I wrote it down.
Property owners required by law, affected by this rezoning, received notice at least on one occasion, possibly twice.
I'm not asking you about property owners, I'm talking about business owners, I don't own property.
You're asking what notice was given for the public hearing, property owners getting notice.
The business owners aren't, the business owners aren't required. All right, thank you very much. All right, next.
Barbara Schilling? Barbara Schilling?
Thank you for allowing us to all have a voice here, and I appreciate all of your input as well. We've been talking a lot about the future, and about what you all are planning and the commission, what they're developing and everything like that, and the changes that were proposed. I have some current questions, because we currently have a hotel being built, of which there are currently two stories already built. And my first question is, are those two stories indicative of what the next three will be? Or are the next three stories going to be shorter in distance? Because the, these first two stories are quite high. Can anybody answer that question?
I can't recall the exact height, it's been several years, but I do know that the height is consistent with Soho.
Okay.
The finished height.
And, based on what was said in the last meeting, the property is about five feet lower than Soho itself, correct? Okay, okay, no problem. What about the parking? We had an issue with the parking on, in regards to that hotel, in regards to allowing employees of that hotel to park in the Soho parking lot? Has there been any decision made on that? Any conversation on that done yet?
I'm not exactly sure what you mean, any decision.
Well, decision, are you going to allow the hotel to park, or attempt to allow the hotel employees to park underground in Soho's parking lot?
Gotcha. Mike, can you?
Yes, all businesses in the City of Homewood have a right to park their employees, residents, customers in that deck, it's a public parking deck.
Do you have a copy of the documents?
We have a copy of the incentive agreement that was, that sets out that, that says if they park in this parking deck, like all, like any other resident, customer, businessperson, employee in the city, that they have to park in underground parking, based on the fact we've done a parking study that simply says that parking in the underground is not utilized to the extent it is above ground. So it was to encourage them, or to require them, if they park here, that they have to park underground.
Unfortunately, there is not enough parking, if you take into consideration how many residents of Soho there are, and the assigned spaces, and then you look at the retail spaces that are above ground at Soho itself, and if then you factor in anybody who can't find space on the Eighteenth Street corridor to park, they may park in the Soho lot. There is not enough parking under there to allow for the hundred and, I want to say it was a hundred and eighty employees, or a hundred and fifty employees, that were going to be able to park in Soho's parking lot. That is not going to float.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schilling, we've gone beyond our period of time. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you asking me to step down, did you say the time is up?
Yeah, the time was up, I'm just trying to keep everybody's time. Mike, I don't know if you want to respond. Thank you.
The only thing I'd say is, the Soho parking deck is a public parking deck by law, where everyone in Homewood has a right to park there. The Soho developers were, as a part of their consideration for buying the property, got seventy-three or four parking places that I think that they sold to residents for ten thousand dollars apiece. Those who didn't buy those have a right, just like any other person, are entered in the City of Homewood to park in the parking deck.
We haven't restricted the parking underground there, we haven't restricted it for people who are shopping, or visitors of Soho.
No, it's open everywhere.
We have restricted it, but you, the council has said that they are going to allow the hotel employees to park there, that is the issue.
Just like anyone else.
We don't let the Soho, excuse me, the hotel employees park there, just like every employee of Soho, and just like every employee of the downtown businesses. It's a public parking deck built for the public.
All right, I think we're off the subject here. All right. I think we've established that's a public parking deck. Thank you, Ms. Schilling, for your comments, I appreciate those.
Jeff Fenner?
Jeff who?
Ten, sorry, Ten.
My question too is about parking rules. And I guess I don't understand what the current parking rules are, as far as what a business is required to have, how many spaces per square footage? Because it seems like there's a lot of businesses that get approved, that it doesn't seem that they should be able to be approved based on the size of the business and how much parking they have. So, can, so first question is, can someone explain to me what the current rule is under the current code?
For what property?
For any property.
Well, that, it depends on the use, exactly.
Okay.
Eighteenth Street is exempt from parking for the first floor, has been for, since nineteen eighty-six, so that there's no parking requirement, there is no parking requirement for businesses on Eighteenth Street, which has been the way it's been since nineteen eighty-six. C4A, correct.
Okay, so for example, the restaurants, Real and Rosemary and Urban Cookhouse, they seem to be having a parking battle. What's the requirements that they're supposed to have as a new restaurant?
I don't recall the specific numbers, but Real and Rosemary has parking at the rear of their building, and the, would you, Urban Cookhouse has parking on their private lot that satisfied the zoning requirements. Mr. Pugh is here, and maybe could speak more particular to that, but that is the calculation.
Both Real and Rosemary and Urban Cookhouse, there are parking requirements.
Both Real and Rosemary and Urban Cookhouse satisfied the parking requirements per their zone that they were in, per their use.
So. How often do y'all waive those parking requirements? Because I know that they sometimes are waived, or, in the instance of the church that was zoned behind Eighteenth Street there by Wells Fargo, I know that there was some confusion about spots being double and triple counted, how, and they were still allowed to go in, even though it seemed that they did not have enough parking. So how often do we seem to be waiving those? Because it seems like it's happening.
The church incident was about three years ago, correct?
I don't think we waive them.
We don't waive any parking that I'm aware of.
Well, I mean, but I guess it's, the question of, you'll count spaces where we say, "Well, this space isn't going to be used during this time," so you're counting the Wells Fargo parking, but the Wells Fargo Bank is using their parking during their business hours.
They can do that by contract with Wells Fargo, if Wells Fargo sees to do that.
But I think the problem comes when we assume that it's not going to be used, but it could be used. And then my last question will be, because I'm not necessarily getting an answer to that, is, the new plan, would you say the new plan, the parking rules are more restrictive or less restrictive for businesses? Requiring more parking or requiring less?
Less.
So, we have a current parking problem, and the new plan will make it better or worse?
First, you don't have a parking plan and you desperately need it. That's different.
Yeah.
You used exactly the right term. At this moment in time, you don't have a parking plan and you desperately need one. Because the biggest, one of the best public utilities that a municipality owns is the on-street or the private parking that the city owns. And so, right now, for example, the highest demand parking in the entire city is on Eighteenth, and it's free, and until very recently, there wasn't anyone writing tickets. But, I just, one councillor, today, got a ticket.
Our meeting this morning, over the three hours.
Yeah. So, regulating the parking supply that you have is the first step. The next step is to treat it like a utility, and keep the parking deck free as an amenity that's only a block away from your greatest demand, but meter the parking on Eighteenth, and then you can use the funds from that to create more parking. That's the problem.
So.
It's because all of the employees are parking out there all day and aren't paying.
Can't hear.
At the risk, at the risk of all you being mad at me, I actually support the parking meters. Because we have to, we have to control some of the parking, not let it lose track. Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Next.
Matt Fells?
Actually, Mr. President, I would like to add to that. So, one of the things that came out of all of these public hearings is that there is concern about parking. So we have an agenda item that's currently on the agenda to address the parking management issues, whether that's metering, it's looking at solutions that we can help with the turn of parking. Secondarily, we have the Eighteenth Street Beautification Project, which is adding almost seventy spots from Twenty-Eighth up toward Rosedale Drive. Additionally, we're searching for spaces where we can do off-site parking for employees, so businesses can tell their employees to go park in this lot and walk to their place so they can keep spots free on Eighteenth Street. And additionally, we are also, we met with a couple of business owners in the last couple of weeks, and we've offered multiple times over the last few years to enter into public-private parking agreements with people who own large lots. We've made some progress, contracts stand in the way of some of those spots, but as those contracts expire, we will have the option to negotiate with them and hopefully enter into an agreement, so the city can access those underutilized lots. So, just FYI, thanks.
Thanks, sir. All right, Mr. Bell?
So before I read this, I've been here since nineteen eighty-four, and I've never had a problem parking downtown. Family of five suburban, still never have a problem parking downtown. And I eat and shop at all of your stores, so, just so we're on the same page. I own Bite Sizing, my dad started it in nineteen eighty-five here in Homewood. I'd like to thank you guys for your leadership and your forward-thinking for trying to get out in front of this. One of the things I hear on Facebook quite a bit, and I'm on there a lot, is you guys aren't forward-thinking, so I appreciate that, and the two years of planning that has gone into this. So, although I hear a lot of people saying they didn't know about it, I appreciate it, and have been made well aware. To everyone behind me, which I can't turn around and talk to the microphone, let's get off Facebook and talk to these guys. In seven days, I reached out to four of them, talked to all of them within about forty-eight hours, and not a single one ignored me. So, there's a lot of misinformation out there, there's a lot of he said, she said. Let's get past that and actually talk to the people that literally live in our neighborhood, they're Homewood City Councilmen, and get through some of this stuff, guys. When the Regional Planning Commission, and this is hearsay, so I haven't confirmed this, so I apologize, but I'm pretty sure it's true, tells our city council, they no longer want to work with us because of how the community reacts when they help us try to plan for the future, that's a problem for me. I'm a business owner, and I want more people to come to our city, I want this community to grow. And when the Regional Planning Commission and developers that I think a lot of, that a lot of live in Homewood, also say the same thing, that they'd rather go to Hoover, Vestavia, or Mountain Brook to do some, a project over here, again, a problem for me. So, I get there's some frustration, I get there's some things clearly that we want to clean up, but let's do this like the home... up, but let's do this like the Homewood that we tout when stuff goes sideways. I almost said a bad word. When things go bad, we seem to come together, but when we talk about these things, we bicker and accuse people of all kinds of paranormal activity. So.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Let's get together on this, guys. By the way, it's a good plan. There's a few things that need to be tweaked.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Howard?
Who?
Jim Howard?
Questions for the answer.
Jeff Underwood?
I was going to yield you some of my time to you to hear more from you. Jeff Underwood, 121 Benita Drive, I think that's my seventh address in Homewood since 1956, so I'm drenched in nostalgia for Homewood. Thank you and thank the RPC and Linda, Lindsay, I thought the master planning process was thorough, it was inclusive, it did what it needed to do. I think it's a, we're proud of that master plan. And so now you're in that messy legislative process of legislating and making decisions. So thank, welcome, welcome to that process. And you have a lot to do. You have to balance the public interest and all these diverse private interests that are coming your way. And I would ask one thing. What is the guiding principle behind the plan? What is the guiding principle? I think your president used exactly the right words, preserve and protect. To me, that's what this plan has to do. You either go down the path of preserving and protecting, or you go down the path of promoting additional economic development. Now, the reality is, you probably need a little bit, a little bit of promotion of economic development, but this should not be an economic development plan for downtown Homewood. It's a preserve and protect plan. Just be really careful about and understand the implications of the decisions. There are going to be an incentive for people to build more in Homewood. Just be careful and be cautious about that. Align yourself with preserve and protect. I agree with Betsy earlier who said, put this off until after the holidays. And thank you for your active listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jennifer Mims? Is it Mims? Okay.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Mims. I'm the co-owner of Real and Rosemary and Caveat. I appreciate several of you coming by over the last weeks to speak to us. I have not had a chance to meet with you personally because we are in our busy season, as many of the business owners here are as well. I've been part of operating businesses at Homewood since 2005. The charm of Homewood that we all want to protect is not, in my opinion, so threatened by the amount of glass or the height of the buildings as much as it is by the fact that customers don't have adequate parking. And if customers can't get to our buildings, it doesn't matter how charming they are. I've met with many of you over the past four years about parking concerns and was told in our restaurant that parking would be considered soon as part of the solution. I'm waiting. I have the utmost respect for Ms. Puckett. I've known her for years and I have respect for her work. At last week's meeting, she said essentially that they were instructed that bank financing and market demands would take care of the parking demands. Unfortunately, there are a variety of other things that affect parking, including varying enforcement practices and city variances that are affecting us now as well as many others. Years down the road, it may be true that families and other people can use ride sharing and public transportation. Today, when my rent is due next month, my landlord in the back, that's not a practical option for the families that dine with us. Parking is a necessity and I don't believe the parking that is proposed in the plan today is adequate for today's customers' use. I don't understand how you consider a rezoning plan without comprehensively including parking. I appreciate that y'all are looking at some solutions that you put up last week, Andy and Brett, but I don't think it goes far enough, fast enough. We've been looking at this for a long time and we need comprehensive solutions to parking. It's disheartening to lose so many customers because they can't get to us. And while the tax revenue of our businesses is very small, the impact on my team and my family is very important to me. I would urge you to consider a comprehensive parking solution that is a solution with business input before you vote on this plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I want to butcher this name, is it ISSAM?
No, you need, sir, 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 you need to call on up so we can all hear, okay? Thank you.
Okay, for your own protection and safety, I was going to speak from back there because I'm visually impaired and didn't want to run into you. To our council, our residents here in Homewood and all of the business owners, I have the greatest respect for this city. As the owner of Salon U, I'm a proud business owner, proud to be a part of this community. I concur with what Caveat was saying and I was just seconding what she was saying. I'm asking you guys as leaders and as professionals to really try to listen to the community and the residents. I'm sure all of the intentions here are great and everybody here is a good-hearted, respectable individual who wants to accomplish the greater good for this community, but it is important as city leaders that we really acknowledge and listen to the community. And it's clear to me that we're not all on the same page and before we move forward, we need to get on the same page. I think parking cannot be eliminated. The one thing I've heard overall and most of all is parking. I think that needs to be our focus and once we've achieved that, maybe we can move on to other things.
Thank you.
Okay, the only other person I have on here was Jim Howard, is he not here?
Yeah, I have my questions.
Okay, I don't have anybody else on here. Anybody else want to address?
Anyone else, you all, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Everyone can take your time, you can just come up, sign up. That was just our initial sheet. Just put your name and address and look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah, we're doing that, yeah, say two things.
Ma'am, no ma'am, we've already, we've got to get through this. Thank you.
Parking deck, police department.
They're moving. The police department's moving to West Homewood. Police department's moving to West Homewood.
Yeah, with a parking deck.
Okay, who's up next? Melody, who's up next?
Sorry, is that Mr. Birchfield? What's your first name? Clay, okay.
But then there's people who want to park there, green space.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I did send the council a letter late last week and, sorry, and I noticed that a few of the items in the letter were addressed. I noticed that there were more that were actually not addressed out of that letter. But I would like to say that the council president started off by saying that the first thing to do was to preserve and protect the city. And looking at the low-intensity district on Crescent Avenue, the way that the regulation is written, it basically makes every building on the street a non-compliant use. I don't think that's protecting what we've got. I mean, if you read it and look at it, it makes us all non-compliant uses. And I don't think that's the way that a zoning ordinance should be written. The second thing that was pointed out was that the 13 districts that we've got, there are some little small nuances between the districts. Well, if you want to consolidate districts, then make some small changes to the districts that are there and don't throw everything out and try to start over with something new that hasn't been planned to work with the size of the lots that we've got, particularly on Crescent Avenue. I think that it's a heavy-handed way to try to force issues rather than working with the property owners to be able to do the best with their properties. Once our properties become non-conforming uses, it limits, it stagnates what the opportunities are to make a good neighborhood. And we're not a blighted street on Crescent Avenue. We've got lots and lots of mom and pop businesses that are there. We've got 13 of them in our buildings alone and it would basically make an area that is available to them now out of price range for a lot of the businesses that are successful on that street right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Birchfield.
Mr. President?
Scott Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Tames.
What uses are we disallowing in this proposal on Crescent that are allowed now?
I'm not familiar with any uses that would be disallowed that are currently permitted.
If you read the ordinance, it says any lot, any structure, or any use which are non-conforming. And if you look at the lot and the structures, they don't comply with the parking setbacks.
And it was your critique of that that caused us to work very closely with a number of your private counselors as well as your city attorney to craft an incredibly permissive statement for uses to continue to expand and to grow and to adapt even if they're not perfectly compliant today. So that's the reason that modification section was added, was for that very purpose.
I realize that. I think it is the wrong approach to try to take and completely change the zoning that they're now, to take away the rights of the property owners and make them go through a process that was not there when we put our investments into the property.
Thank you, sir.
Scott Bryant?
Yeah. Can I just respond to that?
Sure, I mean, if we can.
Okay, because that's not exactly correct. The process that you would go through for anything to do with your parcel today is identical to the process that you would go through for a legal non-conforming application. Any sort of building permit that you have to pull anyway, you'd have to pull under the new criteria and staff, just as they would review and determine your compliance under whatever your current zoning is, they would review and approve the fact that you're becoming more conforming. So actually, the process is identical. There's no new hoops to jump through.
All right, next, thank you.
My name is Scott Bryant. I live at SoHo South Building, 1830 29th Avenue South. I'm the co-developer of SoHo Aloft Broadway Park condominiums. The proposed zoning ordinance dictates and forces uses of property from a regulatory perspective, not a market perspective. Let me state for the record that I'm in complete agreement with longtime Homewood architect Clay Birchfield, who just spoke, his letter to the city council dated December 4th, it's public record. I will attempt to address other issues found within the proposed zoning ordinance, first being the non-conformity in regulatory language of the proposed zoning ordinance. On December 2nd, it was stated that the current law for non-conformity is that's the way it's written. However, current uses conform to the current ordinances. All properties will be in violation of this ordinance in some shape, form, or fashion. All the way down to all outdoor electrical plumbing and mechanical equipment must be located behind a front facade concealed from street view with a screen wall. These facilities may not encroach into any setbacks. Parking structures, ground floor parking, any ground floor parking structure butting a public street must have habitable space for a depth of 30 feet. That's forcing issues. Another regulatory aspect is the open space language. SoHo would have had to have 12,000 square feet of open space for the residential component. That would equate to half of one of the retail buildings' footprints. This one provision would have made this entire project economically unfeasible. The expiration provisions for plans that aren't started within six months are void if there's a cease in construction for six months. Various market conditions, financing, and other unforeseen conditions can easily cause a development to have to stop. This would only make it more difficult to start back. The stated purpose of this zoning ordinance is already in existence, allowing existing processes to be executed properly between government, community, and the private sector market to address future development. All of the improvements that have been done in Homewood on these 51 parcels in 10 years could not, would not be in conformity and would not have occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Shire?
Yes. Hello, everyone. I would like to thank you guys that put the plan together because I know my neighbors much better now. We all got together and we all learned a lot and we spoke a lot. You know, Homewood has got a lot of things, Brookwood Mall, Valley Avenue, you know, it has just about everything you can have. But this is really the only area that really commands such a great amount of retail shops held together. These businesses, December's a real tough month. It happened about 12 years ago, we had this kind of thing happen in December. So it's really important to us that we don't make a test concept out of probably the best revenue that Homewood is getting right now, dollar for dollar. These are some of the richest dollars that this city gets. I estimate about $60,000 I might be off, I mean, $60 million I might be off. And it's very important for us, it takes a long time to build up this kind of community. You would find any developer that will tell you that if they could get these stories together, they could build neighborhoods around this kind of community. We have been working really hard to get the best shops that we could get for this town to give y'all the best tax dollars that y'all could have. This is a very, very, very special thing. Now, you're going to put a test project around us. So this is where it gets confusing for us. We really do not want to be into a test project. We think that we've been here for 100 years and if you look at the rest of Homewood, we got it right. Somehow or another, all these years, we got it right. So. This nice gentleman that I just spoke to from West Homewood, these people out here are all merchants, they work very, very, very hard to make this thing happen. Homewood is a brand and we want people to return to Homewood. When they come here and there's no parking, or the retail's messed up, or the streets are messed up, it doesn't work. People don't return. We want them, if we lose, if we lose, you lose. We want to all win here. If we get this document here, we want it in here correctly. 1,000 square feet, five spaces. No parking decks for retail because people don't park retail.
Thank you, Mr. Shire. Just go ahead and wrap up, sure.
You want to wrap up?
Yeah, please.
Okay. I want to get a good, comprehensive parking plan for our city so that we don't destroy the $60 million plus dollars that we're all providing for this town, because I don't know where the taxation would come at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen Snell?
Hello, council?
Hello, Mr. Kendrick. I am Mary Ellen Snell of 902 Stewart Street. Tonight, you have heard many concerns, suggestions, and questions that overwhelmingly tell you we need a pause on the zoning plan. We ask for a pause on a council vote to approve this plan. We ask for transparency of the council to host public forums to present accurate, thorough understanding of a proposed zoning plan and allow for Q and A discussion in public with elected officials, a public, not private, process. We ask for a design review board and historic designation for the downtown district. We ask for a moratorium on development until we agree on a revised, vetted downtown rezoning plan. If downtown is immediately in danger because of current zoning, then we need to proactively enact a moratorium on downtown development until a rezoning plan has been revised and vetted by the public. Here are some ideas meant to improve the plan with a pause. Save our historic downtown shopping village. It's an asset. Remove the proposed mixed-use zoning along the 18th Street downtown shopping village. Remove it. Minimize the expansiveness of the mixed-use areas and their height. Revise the details of the development standards. Create a design review board to oversee the downtown district. Create a historic district for 18th Street and increase the parking requirements. Two spaces per residential unit, five parking spaces per retail and service, two per large
five spaces. No parking decks for retail because people don't park retail.
Thank you, Mr. Shire. Just go ahead and wrap up, Shire.
You want to wrap up?
Yeah, please.
Okay. You know what I want? I want to get a good, comprehensive parking plan for our city so that we don't destroy the $60 million plus dollars that we're all providing for this town because I don't know where the taxation would come at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen Snell?
Hello, counsel?
Hello, Mr. Kendrick.
I am Mary Ellen Snell of 902 Stewart Street. Tonight, you have heard many concerns, suggestions, and questions that overwhelmingly tell you we need a pause on the zoning plan. We ask for a pause on a council vote to approve this plan. We ask for transparency of the council to host public forums to present accurate, thorough understanding of a proposed zoning plan and allow for Q and A discussion in public with elected officials, a public, not private, process. We ask for a design review board and historic designation for the downtown district. We ask for a moratorium on development until we agree on a revised, vetted downtown rezoning plan. If downtown is immediately in danger because of current zoning, then we need to proactively enact a moratorium on downtown development until a rezoning plan has been revised and vetted by the public. Here are some ideas meant to improve the plan with a pause. Save our historic downtown shopping village. It's an asset. Remove the proposed mixed-use zoning along the 18th Street downtown shopping village. Remove it. Minimize the expansiveness of the mixed-use areas and their height. Revise the details of the development standards. Create a design review board to oversee the downtown district. Create a historic district for 18th Street and increase the parking requirements. Two spaces per residential unit, five parking spaces per retail and service, two per lodging. And let's set standards of excellence for future improvements and prepare Homewood for success. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to working with you.
Reverend Edward Steele?
Y'all have to excuse me. I work for a living. To the council, I am the pastor of the oldest church in Homewood. My church has been here before Homewood was even a city. But what I want you to understand is, how many of you all go to church? Y'all go to church. So if you all don't listen to your constituents about the problem they have and you vote today, that means you had your mind already made up. I ask you to pray. I ask you to pray and ask God to direct you because you're held accountable as leaders of the people that you're placed over. So if they're having a problem, you have a problem. I have a problem because you're moving over into the Rosedale area. I don't live in Homewood, but I pastor in Homewood. And when I pastor in Homewood, that means the residents that I pastor, I speak for them, just as I do you all. I'm asking you to put God first, check your heart. If you check your heart, you won't vote today. Y'all have a good evening.
Sherry Hartley?
Mr. President, I would like to clarify. This plan doesn't encroach upon Rosedale. Specifically, we caught that recommendation early on in the process whenever the community came during the public input session, and they asked that it stop at the edge, right behind Ruby Mans, going back down through by Jim and Jim's. Those are already commercial properties, so it does not encroach upon the residential properties of Rosedale. Just to clarify.
Okay, next. Thank you.
Can you hear me? I'm Sherry Hartley and I own Alabama Goods. I don't own the building that I'm in, but I own the store. And I want to say that I have traveled the state looking at other shopping districts. And I'll tell you, Homewood, 18th Street, downtown Homewood is so unique. It is so special. There's nothing like it anywhere else in Alabama. And so how do you preserve that? I know that the goal here is to preserve and to keep it the special place that it is. I think that one of those things, we've already mentioned it, but I just want to reiterate, is to keep it zoned C4, do not allow multi-use, because I think by allowing the multi-use, that encourages developers to come in, tear down a building, build a two-story with residents on top. So that's my thought, is keep it C4. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn Herr, H-E-R-R. Carolyn? Is there Carolyn Herr, H-E-R-R? Okay. And Christine Underwood will be next.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Herr. I live at 3108 Overton Drive. I'm just a resident. I don't have a hidden agenda. I'm not running for office. I just love Homewood. I just have a couple of points that I would like to address, and I think we could agree on a couple of things at least. We all believe we should rezon. We also agree that we should protect and preserve. I think what we disagree on is that it was our plan. If you say 2,500 people responded and there are 25,000 residents, that's 10% of the residents. I also think that the proposal limited our choices for the zoning. I think we should have been more involved in that. And I would like to know a name of who monitors these ordinances once they are approved. Who is in place to do that?
I'll answer that. Our building engineering and zoning department are the people who... Yes. Mr. Pugh, Mr. Cobb, and we have several new employees who are zoning people as well. So that is the people, that's our staff who's tasked to do that.
Okay. Are they able to keep up with all the building that's going on in monitoring that?
They, yes, they certainly are. And I would tell you, this plan eliminating 13 separate zoning classifications would make that situation much more simplified because when you're trying to keep up with all the different varying things that go on in 13 different zones, it makes it very difficult. So that is definitely one of the positives of this, is that it does make enforcement and control somewhat easier on the staff people who are tasked with doing that.
Okay. I do understand that the monitoring of the requirements and ordinances in the neighborhoods would be different. Do they also monitor that? Case in point, I know this is... Well, I will table this and I will ask someone privately about it. But there's been a house built since all of these 50% permeable surfaces and everything, all of that went into effect, that it has to be at least 75% of the lot and maybe more. Anyway, let's move on to something else.
All right. Actually, you have your two minutes. I'm sorry. Go ahead with your little question. How about that? We'll bend the rules for you if no one throws it at me.
Okay. The comment on so much misinformation being out there is true. I will back that up 100%. But I think the reason for that misinformation is because we don't have a method or a way to meet and have our ward reps come out to us. And provide a chance to, number one, go over what's being recommended, explain it, take questions, and then listen to our comments about that. We always wait until we get down to the last minute and then they start going out and everybody starts getting active. This needs to be a continuing process for Homewood to stay as beautiful as it is. Thank you.
Ms. Herr, I'm Ms. Herr. I'd like to say Alex and I are the Ward four representatives, and we've actually been to a meeting on your street about another issue, not this one in particular. And I would tell you, at any point, if anybody had said, can we set up a meeting, get together and talk about this? In fact, we had some neighbors on Wellington ask us that very question. We would be happy to do that.
I understand that. But I feel like you guys should take the initiative and bring these things to us.
Okay, noted.
Can I also say that I had a meeting yesterday at my house with Councilwoman, President Wright, and 23 residents, and it was a fantastic afternoon. We spent two and a half hours going through this document. It was wonderful, so...
I would also add to that, that in Ward one, we had a meeting November 14th, and everybody in our ward was invited to talk about it as well, and other things going on in the city. We routinely do those things.
And Mike and I have done that for... Mike and I have had meetings quarterly since we came in three years ago as well. So unfortunately, our attendance to those is not what we would hope for. Absolutely, we do. And if you live in our ward... The same way that you guys know about being here tonight. So if you live in Ward two, then let's talk after the meeting.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Christine Underwood?
Hi. I have a problem, and it is that I can't read maps. And I wonder, from what I've heard tonight, I've heard a lot of people say, I'm not really sure about this. Now, if we do this, is this going to be the impact? And there's been some questions and confusion. My suggestion to the council is that I, for example, would love to see a, I don't know what it's called. I think architects call it an elevation, where you actually draw the building, and you draw a car in front of it, and it's like a picture. A model, a model. If you could do that for, say, the east side of 18th Street, the west side of 18th Street, and put in like O. Henry's Coffee, we all know where that is, the hobby shop across the street, put in the signs, put in the parking, and then, let's say that O. Henry's went to three stories, and all the other buildings went to three stories. And then do the same for where the buildings, like where the parking is. I mean, give us some pictures. That would help me, and that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Leigh Anne Ross. I have lived in Homewood since 1989. I live at 202 Benita Drive. And I just have a few questions about the hotel being built, mainly because it is here. It is big, and we all see it. How many parking spaces does the hotel have designated?
214.
That's just for that hotel. No one else can use it.
Yes, I've got these right here in my noodle. 118 are connected to the back of the property. They're actually contiguous with the building. There's an off-premise remote lot about a block away that's got 70. And the city, the city street, the redevelopment of 18th Street is going to include 26 spaces that are public spaces that also count towards the parking count for the hotel along that side of the street. That makes up 114.
All right. My next question is, how many rooms are in the hotel?
In Curio, in the new hotel?
In the new hotel.
129.
Okay. And how many employees are they going to have? Do we know? 100?
I don't know.
Ballpark? Right. And another question I have about the hotel, does it have an event space or a ballroom so that weddings and parties and that kind of thing will be there? Do we know that?
I don't...
There is a ballroom. Okay. Well, the math isn't working for me because if there's a wedding, and there's a restaurant, and the hotel's booked out, and all the employees are there, where are... How is Homewood going to survive? How am I... I'm going to have to walk across 31 to visit the retail stores that I enjoy visiting and the restaurants and that kind of thing. I won't have a place to park. My concern is I'm going to... I don't mind walking, but I'm going to have to walk across 31. And so my concern is, right now, everybody's talking about the parking. I believe that we need to definitely, if we're going to build Homewood with more hotels, restaurants, and that kind of thing, we've got to get a grip on the parking and make developers build enough parking in their hotels and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Hillary Murrell?
Hi.
And Tripp Galloway's up next.
I just have a couple of questions. Are alternatives or additional routes to public transportation or other types of transportation being reviewed as well as parking concerns?
Are you talking about bike lanes? Like, what specifically?
Just other types of transportation to get people to downtown and to 18th Street that doesn't involve just adding additional parking. So any additional transportation. Are you looking into anything?
The Magic City Connector started this summer. It's been very successful, and Homewood has actually been the highest use of the top two spots, two stops, I'm sorry, on the route or in Homewood. So we've been real pleased with that.
But I mean, within Homewood too. Like, getting people from within Homewood to other parts of Homewood.
And we have put bike lanes on Central Avenue to promote, to try to get people to start using that a little bit more. And we've talked, I mean, I think this council has tried to make other suggestions about things that we can do, and we've talked about bike lanes in other places. I think we're trying to encourage that if we can.
Well, and one thing I'll add to that is, I'm sorry, not bad. Thought you were done. So as part of our traffic master plan that we're working on for the city as a whole, there is a pedestrian bike trail type component of that. So one of the things that we identified early on is that we want the walkable way to get out of the community. So I live in Ward one, and we border Crescent. We are Crescent all the way into downtown. But we didn't feel originally it was very safe to get across. So we brightened up the crosswalks. We put in the little LED indicators. We put the signs up so that families could cross, you know, go eat, go back home, on Central Avenue. I said Crescent, I'm sorry. Thank you. But as a whole, I would say this entire council is very pedestrian-minded in finding ways that we can get people on foot to walk around. I mean, I would much rather walk, if I can, from my house to the park or walk to Little Donkey or wherever.
Right. But what about the people that can't walk or can't physically walk and/or live too far away to walk or to bike or don't have a bike?
So for mass transportation, we would have to rely on the Birmingham-Jefferson County Transit Authority.
Right. I understand that.
Currently in negotiations with them to amend some of their issues.
Sure. I'm sure that's not a piece of cake.
No.
I guess what I'm asking is that you will consider it as part of your parking master plan to maybe add in some type of negotiation to be able to work with them for better transportation around Homewood. That's not just bike lanes or bikes or parking spaces.
Sure. I mean, I think we're all open to utilizing mass transit as best we can. We have actually requested BJCTA come meet with us again, but they're Monday, if they show up. So we are working with them toward that. The transportation study is really related to traffic and pedestrian improvements.
Okay.
And the scope's already defined, approved by ALDOT, and we don't want to go back down that road for approval.
So your master transportation plan, that's not part of this master zoning plan? So once that kind of...
Yeah, zoning and the master traffic plan are separate because one is city-related, another one requires Federal Highway Administration approval and ALDOT approval. It's a complicated process.
I'm just asking that that be considered. I know it's not easy and it would be a long, hard-fought battle for you all, but I think that it would really benefit the people that live here. So my second question is...
Go ahead with your second question. I'm trying to...
Okay. What considerations are in place regarding future development of Homewood to ensure local investment has the same opportunity as outside development?
I mean, I can... I mean, I would say the current, the relatively fragmented ownership structure we have in the parcels downtown, they're not owned. Most of them are owned by a single entity. If an entity does own more than one or two parcels, they're separated throughout downtown. And I think a lot of local families own those properties. Most of 18th Street is owned by people who live in this community. I think that is kind of the incentive you see, is they're incentivized to carry their business forward or their loyalty to their tenants that they have. So I think a lot of that's where it comes from. But there's nothing specifically written in the code. I'm not sure legally that we can include that in there.
It just seems like there's a lot of fear in this room about small business owners being ousted in terms of having like bigger chains come into downtown. So I just didn't know if there was any thought as to how that would be regulated.
I will say, we are limited in how we can regulate certain things based on the law. Because if we regulate things that we aren't supposed to regulate, we can be sued, and we would lose, and they would win, and they would get to do what they wanted to do anyway. So you have to be very careful about how you zone and how you do it so that you conform to the existing law. So that, I mean, we're not, we're certainly not, none of us up here wants big box stores on 18th Street. I would tell you, if you polled the crowd, not one person up here would want that. Nobody wants that. Nobody in this room wants that. Nobody up here wants that. But we also have to conform to the legal, we have to follow the law. We have to. I mean, we would be in trouble if we didn't. So, you know, there are certain things that we can do and certain things that we can't based on the laws of the, you know, state.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I want to express thanks in that the, at the work session last Monday night, there was discussion about the dynamics of the 50% standard that was in the initial draft as to how that would apply to nonconforming uses in any future... the initial draft as to how that would apply to non-conforming uses in any future work on such buildings and structures. And the changes that have been proposed, uh, I think sufficiently meet and fairly meet the concerns of my clients, own several, represent several clients who own properties in the downtown district that is subject to this plan. And I would encourage the council to consider favorably the proposed changes that have been developed in the ensuing seven days on that. Secondly, and this is a, I seek to plant this seed, that one of the concerns, I know that, I represent Karen Callahan, who owns the strip center where Homewood Sporting Goods is. And one of the concerns that the Callahan family has is that if a decision is made to go do a pay system or aggressively, uh, enforce, uh, fines against people who violate parking on public streets, one of the perhaps unintended consequences that is going to happen is that that will be, be a much greater encouragement for people to then poach on private parking, such as her property, and there are others who have, you know, more parking than others do. And so as the city goes forward and seeks to develop this parking management plan that has been referenced, which I think is a, an appropriate step, I would encourage the city to very seriously study and thoughtfully think about, how do we as a city put a plan into place that does not unduly impose unintended consequences on people who have their own parking lot? And then they're gonna have to potentially hire their own private security guards, which is not a good thing. It creates hostility that doesn't need to exist.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Galloway.
Kevin, is it McCain? McCain?
Hey, Kevin McCain, ninety-one Lucerne Boulevard. Want to thank all y'all for your service. Uh, and I'd like to know that the vote is gonna be pushed till the first of next year. We're in the holidays. It's a crunch for most everybody here, trying to make their year. Will y'all commit to wait until next year to have a vote on this?
Yeah, we're, we're not voting tonight.
I know not tonight.
Yeah.
Will you not vote until next year is what I'd like to hear you, you know, commit to. If y'all would tell us that tonight, it'd be good for everybody.
I think, I think that the, what I, I understand the plan to be is that we're going to take the public comments from tonight and see what, what if anything needs to be changed and, and take the recommendations, placemakers, and, and look at those. I think we need to get through this process before we figure out exactly when a vote would be taken. I don't think anyone can tell you that right now.
But you also aren't willing to tell me that you won't vote until after the end of the holiday season, that we're all working through to try and make our year and make a living? I would appreciate, and that doesn't seem like it's too much to ask. It's, you know, thirty days, basically. Y'all can't commit to putting this off for thirty days and considering what we've said for maybe thirty days?
Well, I think, I think what we have to do, I think what we have to do is consider what you've said tonight, and we aren't even through that process yet.
Okay.
We just have to take it all into consideration, and we will, I assure you. I said, we have to take it all into consideration, and I assure we will, assure you we will.
As far as parking, one thing that I've heard mentioned is meters. And, and I'd like for y'all to all realize that meters aren't gonna resolve or assist anything about the parking problem. That's generating revenue of, over the parking that you've got, but it's not creating spaces, and it won't solve any of the parking problems. So you shouldn't be throwing that out like it's something that's gonna resolve any kind of parking problem.
I think, I think meters is, is a general term. What Andy and I have on the agenda now is a, an RFI for parking management. I don't, I don't think anybody envisions individual parking meter stuck at the top of every spot. Honestly, I don't know what it looks like. We're gonna request information from experts to come in and make proposals to us. In some of the meetings I've had this week and then this morning, I emphasize that we want business owners there during that process to figure out the best way to implement some sort of parking management system. Again, I, I don't think any...
Sorry. I don't think anybody thinks we're gonna have, you know, pay meters at the top of every spot or anything like that. Frankly, it's not done anymore. Um, there's lots of new modern techniques, things like that, that we're about to all learn about.
But the, the point I'm making is, however, whatever style, if it's one spot in a meter or if it's the nice new electronic style, it doesn't resolve any parking problems. It doesn't improve any parking problems because it doesn't create any parking place.
Well, we're doing, we will create parking spaces... That's a great point. We will create parking spaces where we can, but at some point, you're out of land to build parking, and so we gotta find innovative ways to make the parking we have work to the benefit of our businesses. I don't know what that answer is yet. That's why we've got the RFI out to see what the experts tell us, and I encourage every business owner to participate in it because it sounds like, from what the room says, some people favor a metering system, some people don't. We'll have to come up with some sort of compromise and see what works best.
Well, and to that effect, the, the easiest way for the city to mint parking, we can't make more streets and put street parking out. We need business owners that have large lots to enter into long-term agreements with us to utilize those lots. Because that's the closest parking to Eighteenth Street.
You've mentioned that you've tried to do that, talked to some people about doing that. Who have y'all?
Tricia McCain, Ken Shea, uh, the one that owns the lot, um, what's the other one?
What are y'all trying to do?
We're trying to enter into a public-private partnership for the lots that are not quite as utilized, as high as Eighteenth Street. So...
All right. Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
That's not relevant. I'm telling you, I would enter into an agreement with you about your parking lot if you would like.
Mr. McCain, thank you, sir.
One quick question. The planning commission approved the initial plan. Now that it's been amended, does it have to go back to the planning commission for review?
That's not determined yet.
I'm sorry?
It's not determined yet. Meaning, we don't know. That will be under consideration. Because it depend, it depends on, it depends on the final makeup of the plan, that, all the changes that we're receiving tonight that have even come forth, even before the meeting tonight, and that will be, that determination will have to be made.
So when do you think you could tell us whether you're gonna vote before the end of the year? We just have to watch and wait to see when y'all are gonna vote?
Well, right now, it's coming, it's coming up for our next meeting on, on December sixteenth. Thank you, sir.
Lindsey Chitwood?
Lindsey Chitwood, three oh nine English Circle. Um, I just have a couple of things. Since there was a lot of people who think they have not been contacted, and you did say you contacted the landowners, but the business owners would like to be contacted, can there be a process put in place to contact all of these people that's not assigned on City Hall door, that's more either email or by hand to every store, mail?
Anybody who wants to be contacted can let the city clerk know, and they'll distribute notice to them.
Okay. They can get on a list?
Sure.
Okay. That'd be, that might be nice if we had a list that started tonight.
It's on the website, but it is melody.Salter, S is in Sam, A-L-T-E-R, at homewoodal.org.
And it's her birthday today, so wish her a happy birthday when you send her an email.
Just like, thank y'all for my birthday party.
Um, also, can y'all publicize, you said that you had meetings at the beginning, somewhere in the beginning of the meeting, that you had meetings with business owners and stakeholders regarding the zoning plan and master plan. And again, I just have kind of heard from the group here that they don't feel like they were contacted or involved. And so can you publicize who you did have meetings with?
Yeah, I think we can repeat that.
Because that's also a thing today. I know there was a meeting today with the placemakers, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Susan.
Susan. With Susan and Jennifer and Britt. And, you know, that was a very productive meeting, I heard, but I wasn't invited, you know? So, anyway, it just is one of those things you put out there of, it's, it's not, all these meetings are, you know, should be public, maybe the minutes should be put somewhere. There needs to be a little bit more communication. I realize you can't put this many people in a room every day, all the time, and sometimes conversations do happen offhand, but, you know, just keep in mind that we would all like to know, obviously, you'd like to get the right information out there and not the wrong information. And then the last thing, uh, when Babi was talking with Susan, she suggested a text amendment for, to stop residential on Eighteenth Street. And usually amendment means after the fact. So can I get some clarification on that? And then, when that happens, and then if it's later, then could it be protested, and then it never happens? Anyway.
She'll answer that for you. Thank you.
And I apologize for facing this way. Um, the, the answer to that question is, if you publish issues tied to use and then you change that, then it must go back through Planning Commission. So after this... It's been, it was a part of the public notice. So everybody that got the letter in the mail, all the property owners that got the notification, were notified that they would get specific, that we were suggesting specific uses. And if we adjust that at this point, then we have to start the process over again, which...
They need to start it over again.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that isn't decided yet. Depending on the body, it has to be legally assessed by, I mean, you're very, you're very fortunate that you have attorneys on your council as well as your city attorney, and they have to assess all of these proposed changes. And if they have reached a point where it has to go back through Planning Commission now anyway, then it can be included now. Otherwise, it would be something that could be amended virtually immediately in the next, like, right after the first of the year.
So what's the cause, what would be a cause right now to cause it to go back to Planning Commission?
Use changes.
So the proposed text amendment that she wants would cause it to go back to, okay, so she can do, she should do that right now?
No, she does, if, if she does it now, it will kick it back to Planning Commission, which may or may not be something that council chooses to do. So that's why my recommendation was to do it as a text amendment, then you can do it easily and efficiently. And Planning Commission doesn't have to reconsider the entire ordinance, they're only considering that issue.
Okay, so everything is... So she calls it a text amendment?
Please, please, thank you.
Okay. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
She didn't really tell us how to do it. Counsel a little bit, okay.
Yeah, we will. Thank you.
Instructions on that.
Thank you. All right, next.
Is it Reima Hartman? Reima. Reima.
Hi, um, thank you for your attention for a few minutes. What I've heard tonight is that parking is everyone's primary concern, and I felt that the opening presentation did not really explain the reasoning behind the proposed changes to the parking requirements. The parking requirements are being reduced, but why? What's the thinking behind making it, make, requiring fewer spaces per thousand feet? How does it help? We just haven't heard that. We heard that bankers and developers would keep, would, would not, um, would not endorse plans that, where the parking didn't make sense, but why would that be the approach we would use, you know, to manage parking? So I think people don't understand what the thinking is behind the changes to the parking, and we would all benefit from hearing more about that.
Someone will speak to that.
The current proposal for parking is based on painfully many studies. If you think zoning's boring, parking studies are really boring, um, that have been done based on trip generation of, and therefore parking demand of different types of environments, from the most rural to the most urban. And for small downtowns that don't have confidence in financial controls or market controls, the one space per residence is actually what the market demand is. It, it's a national standard. I know you're gonna think, well, that doesn't apply to us in central Alabama, but it's proven to apply to most cities and most places. And the reason being, that particular environment, oddly enough, is attracting downsizing boomers and, and finally millennials that are getting around to buying a house, or, or a condo. And because of those market segments being people that are reducing their vehicles per household, the demand is dropping precipitously. And if you move to a larger city, like if you were in downtown Birmingham, it would probably be a half of spa, a half a space per unit rather than one space per unit. So it is calibrated to your city size. The issue about, and I know Mr. Shea and I have a strong disagreement over the number of spaces per reti, for, for retail, but, but that number is also drastically dropping, particularly in an environment, like, even the large nationals are dropping their numbers. So what used to be five per thousand used to be the national standard for large suburban, big-box retailers. The new national standard in that context is four per thousand. And in a urban environment, most cities are, are not requiring anything for retail like you do on Eighteenth Street, largely because the parcels are built out, like yours are, and there's no place to put it. So the on-street parking, especially if you're blessed with diagonal parking like you all are, then you can essentially service those retailers right in front of their front door, which is what works the very best for them. So the issue of the lower numbers for both office and, um, retail are also based on Homewood in that most of your users, your highest demand is over the lunch hour. And when people come and, and go to lunch, many of them are gonna do a secondary trip to pick something up at one of the, of the downtown retailers while they're here. So counting double for those compatible uses, the biggest issue is this. You're talking about protecting character, that preservation and protection. And one of the most deadly things you can do is what you have in place right now, which is a suburban parking standard and permitting it to be in front of the buildings like you have right now in C-4A. And so, God forbid, any building is destroyed and gets replaced, it can go at the back of the lot with a big old parking lot in front. And there, there have also been a huge number of studies that I can share if anybody wants to read them, um, for the impact on retail and on pedestrian traffic by parking lots. For example, mall, um, owners, they are the ultimate experienced, um, entities for retail curation. And they, they create a quarter mile from end to end. And within that area, the experience is absolutely choreographed, how wide the shops are, how clear the glass is, how deep the retail spaces are. And the last thing a, a mall developer would do is permit some huge dead space right in the middle of that carefully curated environment. So if you continue to permit surface parking lots right on Eighteenth in the front, which you do today, you need parking, there's no question about that. You just need it in the right place and the right amounts. And if you put suburban standards on Eighteenth Street in the heart of Homewood, you're gonna create a suburban environment. So you're gonna do the exact opposite of preserving and protecting. So the, these parking standards are written for your exact, for your context. They're not, what you're asking is a rubber stamp of the current parking requirements that you have for, um, all of your suburban locations. And, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. It really, parking needs to be context-sensitive. It, it, it's, it's a formula. It's not a, it's not just a, a single standard.
Then why would y'all propose this without, I mean, same rhetoric? Why would you propose doing this without a plan? If we cannot just go out and twist our nose and, and parking is here? We have to, we have to make a...
We don't own the property.
First and foremost, that's one reason you do not want residential on Eighteenth or twenty-nineth Avenue.
All right, thank you. Uh, next.
Oh, yes, Clark Bailey.
Hi, my name's Clark Bailey. I've been a Homewood resident for over ten years now, and I might be the only person in the room that's ever written a parking study. Um, so I'll speak on that. Parking is probably the most complicated challenge that every city in the country faces that has any sort of urban center. Um, it, it's, it's a challenge no matter your size. Um, and I, I think that without an in-depth review and understanding, you can't solve it. Now, a zoning ordinance cannot solve a parking problem. Now, a zoning ordinance cannot solve a parking problem. If we kind of, as Susan was mentioning, require each business to self-sustain itself with parking on-site, what we will have is the front of a Walmart. And the other part of parking is that different parking is used differently at different times. So if you go on Google Earth right now, look at the satellite photo, and you look at the parking lot in front of At Home, for instance, it's full, 18th Street is full, but the condos behind it, 200 feet away, Eastbury, I think, maybe they changed their name, is almost completely empty, 200 feet. So, and this is where we get into, in the heart of Homewood plan, which is, is really, really good, talks about 59% of our parking is privately owned. And so, it's going to be a long process to create shared parking, to allow the residential parking and the retail parking, who have opposite parking peaks, to share each other. It's not just simple as a zoning change. But with all that said, and before my time runs out, I do support this plan. I think it's the right step to move us to protect our town and our downtown and what it is. And a parking plan is another step. A comprehensive transportation plan is another step. And all of these should be living documents that we continually find, make better, to continue to make our city better.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lewis, is it Niqueet? Nickett? Sorry.
Hi, my name's Lewis Nickett, and I've lived in Homewood for about 15 years now. I love this. Personally, I love the passion in the room. I love Homewood. I think this is the best city in the state, by far. And I think all these people who live here do well, as well, because they wouldn't be here if they didn't care. The way we rally as a community, the way we have fun, you know, when witches rides and Halloween, it's all because we care about enjoying one another. Downtown is where we really get to come together and be prideful, because we all have a sense of ownership to that downtown. And that's why a lot of this passion starts to occur. For me, I think I agree with a lot of the concerns that a lot of the merchants have. What we have going in downtown, we don't need to mess up. So carefully thinking about and listening to those concerns and folding in the protections that preserve that environment, I totally agree with. But I don't want to lose sight of the big picture. Because if you zoom out and you look at what the purpose of this map, or this plan is, it's to create a more vibrant, walkable village community for Homewood. We have that in our Main Street, but it starts to fall apart as you get a block or two off of that. I know when I walk from my house to downtown, I have to go through a tunnel, I have to go across a few parking lots, I have to cross a road. Heaven forbid I don't walk to that tunnel, there's no way for me to get to downtown. So the walkability is one of the big factors that will start to address our parking slowly over time. It will also create a more vibrant community. As those projects start to infill over slow growth around that shopping core, it'll allow for multi-generational residential opportunities to start to occur. Because I know that I'd love a chance for my kid, when he comes back from college, maybe, to have a place to live in Homewood. I'd love for my parents, if they wanted to have a condo, they could. Heaven forbid I retire one day and want to sell my house and, and have a place where I can walk in and around downtown. The residents don't want high density in their neighborhoods, that's what this district is for. It can be done in a way that enhances walkability, so that we all feel safer. Now, in talking to everyone I've talked to, everyone seems to be for that framework. So let's not lose sight of the big picture as we work through the details. Thank you, sir.
We have Ethan Thomason.
Thank you tonight. I'm, I'm new to this meeting tonight. This is the first time, we're the owners of Doug's Coin and Jury, 2907 South 18th Street. Owners for 35 years here at Homewood. I'm the second-generation owner. Have any of you guys been here since the curve was gone? Anybody know anything about the curve?
Back when the curve was here.
Yeah, when it was reconstructed. I think that was the first deal.
I remember the curve, if that's what you're asking.
Well, we do too. And the only thing that I have to say is two points. Basically, we were here when the curve was renovated, and that was the first big construction that we had. In our parking lot, it took out 26 parking spaces. We've been paying for a parking attendant for over 20 years now to keep people out of our parking lot, so we can house our own customers. So our parking issue has been going on for decades. We've never said anything about it, but if we're going to collect some money, we sure would like our money back. The second thing that I'd like to say too is, what about two or three blocks down the road towards 280? What about all the undeveloped stuff there? I think Homewood could grow, but I don't really, I don't know enough about it right now. I will be coming back and, and, you know, being involved. I was, I didn't get a notification, nor did our landlord or our building owner get a notification either. So we're uninformed just as most. And I guess the only other point that I have is just the relevant fact of what we've done, and what we've had to pay for, and what we've had to battle, ever since the first thing that was put in place. I'm all for the revital, to revitalize Homewood. I'm all for growth. We've, we've been here for a long time for a good reason. But we've been here longer than most people have. And we've seen things come, come and go, and we've had to adapt to a lot of them. So, you know, I think it's, just like a lot of people have said here tonight, you know, I think it's, I think it's our right to know too, you know? And we're the ones who are, we're the ones who are here in the, fighting every day. You know, we want to be a part of it. We want to be a part of everything, just like everybody else here. I wish Jen and Cam Carr were here tonight, too, so they could attest to the very same thing. We've battled with the same thing. They've been there longer than we have. So I would just like, you know, maybe the consideration of going a little further out and building it in towards the middle, instead of starting at the heart of Homewood and tearing the heart out of Homewood. Thank you for your time.
Barbara Schilling?
First of all, I would like to clarify something that was said by somebody previously, about maybe three speakers ago. And that is by claiming that the Eastbury has parking available. They do not. And for those of you who don't know what's happening there, is, it used to be called the Hill. It was a rental property. And now it is going to be, it is the Eastbury, and they are selling it. And consequently, as leases ran out, they were not renewed. So the only people to remain in the Eastbury are those who have decided to purchase and stay. Other than that, everyone else has been moved out. So if you drive by at night, it is quite dark, because there aren't that many sold. And the parking lot is pretty empty, because a lot of the people have moved out. That's number one. Number two, I would like to say that I think the parking issue has come up so many times in so many different ways over the course of the evening. And I know you all have, you still have a lengthy agenda after we leave. So consequently, to further this along and perhaps allow you guys to go home at some point in time, I would like to propose that, since we don't have answers on even the hotel situation right now, we don't have answers as to even how many employees there will be. So there's really no way of planning how much parking is needed and where that parking will be right now. But that is, but that is a project that is already on, well underway. But there are some unanswered questions. Consequently, I think you really do need to, and please postpone that vote until after the holidays. Because we don't have answers to so many questions about that property alone, okay? So I appreciate y'all being here. I appreciate you listening to us. I mean, we have concerns, because we live here, and we work here, and, and they're our owners here. So we have legitimate concerns, and we do appreciate the, your service to the community and for everything that you do, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Thank you for listening to our concerns. My name's Andy Echols, 111831, 20th Avenue South. And just to follow up on the hotel, because one of the answers are a little bit unclear to me, as far as how many parking spots they have available, and the, the numbers seem to jump around, but it seemed like the answer, part of the quantity of parking spots, was that the, the public parking spots were included as part of, or being attributed to the hotel.
Yeah.
And if that's so, why, is that correct? And if so, why?
They're, they're required to have 214 parking spots. 188 of those parking spots are private, and 14, 12, 26 of those are public. That's, and that is what they were required. So they had, in regard to complying with the law, utilized public parking to meet their requirements.
So they're using...
Which is similar to a loft, by the way, which has certain private spaces and public spaces as well.
So part of the parking spots that were attributed to the hotel are, are public spots?
Yes, 26 of them, yes.
And that was used in order to meet their zoning requirements?
Or development plan, I think it is. Yes.
Okay. And then also, do they have a ballroom or something, or some kind of meeting?
Again, I'm not familiar with their, I can tell you the square footage. I mean, that's all I can tell you. And the footprint is 19,564 square feet.
I mean, what, regarding the ballroom and the capacity and the number of people that would, would be there, was that taken into account when looking at how many parking spots they were required to have?
I don't think, do you have to do that?
No, I mean, yeah, Mr. Kendrick.
All hotels built downtown, Aloft is included, and, and the Curio Hotel was based on a planned, a planned mixed-use, a mixed-use district. I'm sorry, I can't speak any louder. And that includes parking places. I think Aloft, and you have the numbers, Peter, the rooms at Aloft are like 111?
The rooms at Aloft are 111, 106 private spaces, and 21 public spaces.
The Curio has 129 rooms, and they have, how many spaces?
They have 129 rooms, private 188 spaces, and 26 public.
They were all approved as a, as a mixed-use district, which permits them to have private parking and available adjacent public parking. So the plans were approved by both. In fact, Aloft has substantially less spaces per room than the Curio does. And why, do you confirm that?
Yes, sir.
Based on a percentage of rooms and a number of parking spaces. So the, the new hotel has more parking per room than the existing Aloft hotel does. In spite of what might have been published otherwise. There's a lawsuit that we will address that in. So that's probably not a good topic for a public discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody who would like to speak?
Do we have anyone else? Anyone else? Yeah, please, you can, I would do a last...
I think everybody knows who I am. I used to sit right there. Just a couple of questions. My name is Hunter Payne. I live at 2918 Cahob Brook Lane. I lived in Homewood off and on for almost 30 years. Just a couple of questions. Was there a downtown business assessment made prior to this or during this process? An assessment of the downtown businesses, the makeup of the downtown district? Did you count how many businesses there were, types of businesses, number of employees, number of customers? Do they rent? Do they own? Are they, ask them if they have any rising markets and opportunities, what their vision is, what their foresight is? Did y'all do any of that? Just curious.
I'm looking, no.
Okay.
It's not part of the process.
I, I think that would be important. When was the last time we did a traffic assessment? I know we proposed that, I know, but back in 2017, February, y'all approved monies to be spent for a traffic study.
Yep.
Okay. And then you approved the same thing again in September. But prior to that, how long has it been since we've done a traffic study?
Did we do one when you were on the council?
Well, just, I don't know, we didn't. We didn't. I think we did, we did some analysis as it relates to neighborhood safety concerns.
We do that on a regular basis.
Right. But has there been an assessment of the downtown district's traffic? Do we, like, how many cars are on over Oxmo Road?
I would say the most recent study, two recent studies in the downtown area, there was one for Central Reece, then one for 18th Street, associated with the 18th Street North beautification project.
So what's the traffic count on 18th Street?
I don't have it off the top of my head, no.
Okay. All right. Well, I would say this, Mr. Underwood made a comment about guiding principles, and I strongly encourage that. And a guiding principle, to me, would be, success is when preparation and opportunity come together. So the more y'all prepare, the higher the probability that you're going to succeed. Now, I'm going to quote Andreas Duaney, and I think some people in this room will understand who he is. "You do not experiment with urbanism. Urbanism affects too many people for too long." So my point is, y'all got to get this thing right. If not, there's going to be a lot of unintended consequences. So I strongly encourage y'all, because of all the changes and the input, I strongly encourage y'all to send us back to the Planning Commission, where it can be vetted, where it can be vetted in a different setting, in a more intimate setting, and it can be, you know, input from the business owners, as well as the property owners.
Thanks, sir.
And then once they codify that plan, bring it back, have one more public notice and deal with it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to speak in favor or against the plan?
Do I have a Michelle, is it Rory?
Oh, do we have one more? Okay, please.
Roney, Michelle Roney?
Please.
Hi, I'm Michelle Roney. I live in Hollywood. I've lived there for 21 years. And I just really wanted a clarification. So most of the reference has been to preserving 18th Street, not necessarily 29th Avenue. And from the map that was just put up, so like where 18th Street Oriental's used to be, across the parking lot, Zoe's, is that going to be high intensity right there?
Michelle, we talked, we met today and made that change. So that, that recommendation is going to be included, 29th Avenue, on the south side.
To not be high intensity, but to be medium intensity.
Okay, so the map that was put up, did it show that?
It did.
It did, okay.
Yes, it was a change.
All right, so it's the same?
Yes, it's going to be the same as 18th.
Okay. Because I couldn't tell, like, just from where the dark purple was. So where does that actually stop on that street? Just so far as, like, medium to high?
19th.
At the corner of Aloft. Okay, all right. Okay, so that answers my question. That's good. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Sue Graffes?
I'm back again. Now, my only comment is, I've been to, I don't know how many of these meetings, and so many questions have come up about the hotel. And nobody here can answer the questions about any of it. The parking, the ballroom, there's got to be one person in this room that knows the answers about the parking, the number of parking spaces at the hotel. They've got to know if there's a ballroom there. They've got to know how... They've got to know how many people are they anticipating employing. I mean, I'm not a rocket scientist. I'm just a 72-year-old woman that has worked all of her life. But you cannot tell me with all of you people up here that none of y'all know the answers to those questions. They're not rocket scientists. That is, your responsibility is to know the answers to these questions. Now, why don't you? Why does nobody-
First of all, we have discussed the number of parking spaces multiple times tonight. We have said exactly how many spaces there are. There are 188 private spaces, 26 that are public spaces that are adjacent to the front of the hotel.
And that's enough?
And we've also said, yes, that meets the requirement.
And is there a ballroom for 1,600 people?
No.
No.
Absolutely not. That's been, you know that the ballroom at the club holds 250 to 300 people?
I don't care.
And so I've heard 800 people, we've heard all kinds of stuff that goes around Facebook.
I'm just asking.
It's not, there's not, it's, they've got some space in there, but they're not holding 800 people in there.
And I will also say, we can't-
1,600 is the rumor. And if it's a rumor, then you know what? So be it. It's a rumor.
There's probably a space in that bottom level of that hotel for 1,600 people. They'd be standing side by side, not moving.
It'd be fire code.
And it would also be a fire code violation.
Well, then, good. Then that's not true. Then we can put that to bed.
And we can tell you for sure, we don't know the amount of employees, because they haven't employed anyone yet.
There is no ballroom.
That's what they just said.
Well, I mean, if it's an employee, no ballroom. Isn't that what you just said?
No.
That's what you said.
No, that is not at all what I said.
I didn't say there was no ballroom.
You just said that there is no ballroom for 1,600 people.
Ms. Graffis, I told you there wasn't 800 people.
Okay, well, is there-
Ms. Graffis.
Let's go back.
Hold on a second. We're not going to get out of order here.
I know, but-
All right, hold on just a second.
Y'all don't answer questions.
Ms. Graffis, we've answered the question on the parking. We've attempted to answer the question on the 800-square-foot, or 1,600-square-foot ballroom, of which we said there is, doesn't exist. Or 1,600 people, whatever it is. And so, you know, we're attempting to answer those questions. And all we, you know, we know the square footage of the hotel, we know the parking requirements.
We know the number of rooms.
We know the number of rooms. We don't know how many employees they're going to have, because it hasn't started and they haven't employed anyone. And so, that's the information that we have at hand. We do know they are in compliance with their parking requirements.
So, which leads to the ballroom. Is there, or is there not, a ballroom?
I believe Mr. Harden said, that the only thing he said, he did not say there was not a ballroom. He said there was not a ballroom that was accommodating 1,600 people.
How many people will the ballroom accommodate?
I'm not designing the building, so I can't answer that question.
I'm looking at anybody up here. Does anybody know how many people we can, it will accommodate? I might want to rent it.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I think, hold on.
I don't, I don't believe that on a drawing that comes from an architect for construction, that they put bodies-
You what? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Say how many are in there. So I think when the fire marshal assesses the building at the end of construction, they'll identify the maximum occupancy. At least in my business, that's how they did it. They came in at the end and identified how many people were allowed in that space once construction was complete.
Oh, so that's how it works? I didn't know that. I'm not an architect.
Neither am I.
So, there you go, well.
But I've built a business, and I've had to go through the process of getting, you know, people counts.
So y'all still-
So I know how to cap it.
Well, can, hey, Miss, thank you. Listen, you all can go, you can go speak to whoever you need to speak to. This is a public hearing pertaining to this. We've answered the questions. We're going to move on to the next speaker, okay?
Who's the guy at the hotel?
You can go over there and talk to him.
Where?
All right, thank you.
Next, hey, Ms. Graffis, please. All right, next speaker. Do we have anyone else?
I'm Melanie Geer, is it Geer? Is it, how's it, G-E-E-R?
Thank you.
I'm going to have to go to the bathroom here. Hi, thank you all for listening to us tonight. My name is Melanie Geer. I'm at 304 St. Charles Street. Okay, thanks for your time tonight. So I just want to go back to the first comments by Mr. Wright, that the purpose of the zoning is to protect and preserve what we have downtown. But I guess I'm still confused about how this new zoning will actually protect and preserve anything. I think it changes our zoning, but I really have not heard how it protects or preserves anything that we have. On 18th Street, it allows two stories. From the hotel back to 31 and 280, it allows five stories. I know that's a down zoning, but it, in my opinion, and then on Linden, and on Crescent and Linden, we can go up to three stories. So in my opinion, more than protecting and preserving, it says to developers that this is what we want in these areas. And I hope it doesn't, and I know other residents have said that, we hope that this is not a way of communicating that this is what we would like for Homewood to be, is five stories, all behind, all behind that huge hotel, and all along where Dimitri's is, and where Jax and the Shoes Chop, and all of our nice, one-story, low-level buildings that give us the quaint downtown that we all love. We don't understand how this new zoning helps to protect or preserve any of that. And going forward, I just would ask my counsel to listen to what our residents have said tonight, that we want to protect and preserve, and help us do that. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. All right. I think we've all answered the question, but Mr. Jones, please.
I just say, quick point of clarification. Crescent and Linden has proposed low intensity, which is two stories.
Does that change?
No, it's always been that way.
And certainly, the 18th Street is down to two stories.
Yes, two, and because Susan stepped, oh, she just came back.
She just came back.
We had, after some meetings this morning, I think a new recommendation she gave is 29th Avenue will also be limited to, similar to 18th Street, along with the same facade changes. First floor must be a storefront, or shopfront, I forget how it's, storefront, excuse me, a storefront, which removes common entry. Second floor obviously has the parking requirements that have been recommended, while the first floor maintains the no requirement that we have now on 18th Street.
We have Joe Echols.
I live at 308 English Circle. And I want to say I really appreciate how the council has responded to comments, recommendations. You have really been at, more than I've ever seen, the council work to really know what the community is wanting. And I especially want to commend Jennifer for letting Ward Five know consistently what's going on. She does newsletters, she does updates, and I would encourage every one of you to probably, if you're not doing it, to follow her example. She's been excellent. And I will say, that's my husband clapping the loudest, by the way. And he's my caregiver. So I also want to commend Susan Henderson and Lindsay Puckett for the time and effort they've put in it. I really appreciate everything that y'all have done. I know you're going to get it right. I see that you're really concerned, and you want everyone, and I do appreciate Ken Shea with his groundswell of getting people involved in this, in all their comments. I think it's good for our city. I think you're going to really look at everyone. I really think you are at a place that you can make a real difference in Homewood. And I know you can, and I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Martha Jones?
I'm back. I've lived in this city for over 62 years. And why not use the police department, as it is now, and build a parking deck with a green space on top? That's property that's owned by the city. I know Mayor McBrayer does not like parks. They don't generate revenue.
Hold on one second. How can you sit there and say that I don't like parks? I have probably built more parks in the city of Homewood than you've seen in your 62 years.
But they don't generate revenue.
We don't, we don't require revenue off of parks.
All right, ma'am.
And it actually-
But why?
I said, ma'am, get personal.
The big question is, and y'all have all said, y'all have all hemmed hot about it, why not postpone this vote until after the first of the year? Are you going to lose grant money? Is the contract running out with these people? Why will you not?
Yes, tomorrow. It's over tomorrow.
But the thing is, there's so many of us, and more than we're able to come tonight, that don't want you to do it until we find the parking area. Please, please postpone your vote. If you don't, I feel that you've already made up your minds.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to speak?
Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this item? All right, seeing no one else coming forward to speak in favor or against this item, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment section of this public hearing. I will turn it over to counsel. I know we're going to carry this over without objection, but I will turn it over to counsel. If anyone has anything further to add to this before we move on through the rest of our agenda tonight, ladies and gentlemen, but does anyone else-
I would. I'm new here.
Harden and Mr. Jones.
If you don't mind, I'm new here, so I hadn't been here through a lot of this. But the short time I've been here, people, I see so much anger at the council, and they have worked so hard to try and do what they think is best for the city. And most people have left, and we don't get to have our say, but they are, have been working so hard to try and help make sure that we don't have something bad going on in the city and downtown. And that, they took the initiative two and a half years ago to start this process, to make sure that it was done properly and done with good intention. And some reason, it's made everybody mad that they're trying to do what I think is right. And certainly, input is helpful. I think this process is helpful. I think getting everybody to say what they want and need is helpful. You heard the man talk about parking is the hardest thing of any municipality in the country. So it isn't something that can come overnight, and we don't own most of the property. It's privately held, so it's hard to ask those private owners to give up their parking. But I would just want everybody to know how hard Britt and his committee have worked for so many hours at so little pay to do this. And they're not trying to do something bad for the city. They're doing something good for the city. And somebody needs to say that. It's, you know, so anyway, thank you.
All right, Mr. Jones, and I'll come to you, Ms. Andrews.
Yeah, I just wanted to mainly address what Mr. McCain said, and I've been thinking about it. It's, I didn't want to make any comments till the public comment section was over, but this process has almost been a perfect storm in terms of timing. And for that, I apologize. And what I mean by that is that if we had our crystal ball and looked back six months ago and looked at when the planning commission was going to have this particular item, and then we realized that we're going to be taking this item right in the middle of holiday shopping, which, as we know, probably can be 70, 80% of your revenue. So, Mr. McCain, you're exactly right. I mean, this is not where you want to be in December. You know, you've worked all day selling toys, I would hope, and you want to be, you want to be at home, and so do we. But I'll just say, it just happened that we got this when the planning commission dispensed with it. It came to planning and development, and unfortunately, that was in December. We're here. I'm not going to vote on this until January. I'll just tell you that. The rest of the council might have a different plan, but I just feel like it's been, it's been difficult, and I know we've been working on this for a long time, but now people are engaged. And I feel like now's the time that we can come together. I mean, I've been on a lot of ad hoc committees that, for instance, Ginger Busman made me serve on, where we had people from all over the community, and we worked on a particular issue. And this is almost one of those type scenarios where we need input to determine how do we, what is the best way for parking? I mean, you have the RFIs coming in. It's critical that we get feedback from everybody to determine what it is. I'm not an expert in parking, so we need to do that, but at the same time, the parallel course needs to move forward, and we need to determine, what do we do? It might not, it might be do nothing, it might be move forward. But I just wanted to address the timing. It was not purposeful, the way that it occurred. And I wish more people were here to hear that, because I do feel bad that it's happened, you know, during the holiday season, when you need to be focused on generating revenue. So that was all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Andrews?
I just want to go back a little bit to talk about some of the emphasis of why we took this on. Cleaning up the zoning map, taking away the possibility of doing something really high and really obtrusive in the northeast section of downtown. That was a, to me, it was such a great opportunity to prevent that from happening. Everyone on this council loves Homewood. Everyone on this council knows that 18th Street and 29th Avenue is the heart of our city. I'm not, I know we use that language in the Heart of Homewood Master Plan, but that we use that language for a reason. I had 23 people in my home yesterday to talk about this. I don't have one Christmas present under my tree. I have spent, and I know, I know you guys are all out here tonight, y'all have been sitting here for three hours, too. I have, I've probably put four hours every day knocking on doors downtown in the last couple of weeks. Do I wish I did that six months ago? Heck, yeah. I'm very regretful that I personally did not go knock on doors six months ago. I have a newsletter, I have a Facebook page, and I just assumed that people knew what was going on, and shame on me that I did. So I absolutely regret. But I will tell you that the conversations that I've had for the last two weeks, along with some of my co-counselors and I, who have been visiting businesses, meeting with business owners in their shops, have been profoundly important. I've learned so much. I've made new friends, I hope. I can't tell you how much I've learned from them. I've always been, you know, an admirer of the businesses downtown. I shop there, you know, everything. Every book I ever buy is from Little Professor. I used to shop every Christmas present for birthday gifts I ever got at Toy and Hobby. We only drink a Henry's coffee. Every running shoe I ever buy comes with a trash check, and I'll ever order online for running shoes. I shop everything from fabric, my sweet friend Melissa Mistro. So I just want you to hear us. We love you. We are here for you. We are listening to you. This has been a hard process for us, too, because we've taken some hits personally. There's nobody up here who is here to gain. We are here to serve. There's nobody up here gaining monetarily, nothing. We, I can't tell you the hours we have put into this. So I just want you to hear us. We love you. That's why we're here. That is why we are here.
Anyone else? Mr. James?
I wanted to thank again all the business owners that did take time out of their, what I know is a busy schedule this time of year, to talk to us. Like I said, some of it was scheduled, some of it wasn't, which I know is a lot harder to have some guy and a couple of his council buddies show up in your place of business, and then you're willing to give us time to talk about it. I will say this, though. It was those meetings, those in-person meetings, when we all were able to speak to each other, that the most got done. I mean, that's where these recommended changes all came from. And I think it's a great example of maybe when we, you know, move into the committee room, or move into the shopfront to discuss what we're up to, what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish. It's a great example of how things can get done versus when people maybe don't end up conversing. And I did want to point out, you know, one thing, because we all know parking is at the forefront of everybody's mind. Unfortunately, we could pass this thing tonight, and it will not have one iota of effect on our current parking problem in downtown Homewood. We could freeze everything in place today, and it would not solve that problem. So, you know, there's all sorts of things we're doing right now to try and improve that situation. We've touched on them, including the ticket I got today. But I don't want people to conflate, you know, the current situation we- But I don't want people to conflate, you know, the current situation we have versus what we're trying to do to preserve and protect our downtown going forward as far as updating this zoning. I think, and again, this is just in my conversations with experts, with businesses, you know, our solutions to parking don't lie within zoning. They just don't. We're going to have to get creative. We're going to have to work together. I use the example of downtown Edgewood. What would downtown Edgewood be like if the Wade family didn't work with the city to lease us those parking lots? It would not be what it is today. We've got to think outside the box. We've got to come up with solutions like that. And we're going to throw them all on the table, and we're going to see what sticks. And we really do expect everybody's involvement in that, because that's the opportunity to make your voice heard and let, and guide us into doing ultimately what you want, and hopefully will be the most effective. But I want to take a moment just to say that and to thank the folks that participated, and to thank all the council people up here and staff, and Lindsey and Susan, and everybody, the RPC and placemakers that really have worked so hard for so long on this, and we'll get it right.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Wyatt?
Yeah, I just want to echo some of what's already been said. You know, I can't count the number of people that I have talked to about this over the past two years, and particularly the last few weeks. I was in Pickly Wiggly last night and spent an hour in the freezer section going through the plan with two people, and I was happy to do it. I've talked on the phone, exchanged emails, attended meetings, and all of us have, quite frankly. And I just want, I just hope the public understands that we appreciate that, because that's part of this process. You know, going through this is important. This was an important plan undertaking to, for us to start and be proactive about what we were doing. And this is an important part of the process. And what I've found from my discussions, from hearing everyone tonight, the goal is the same. And it doesn't matter whether you're talking about the RPC, or placemakers, or this council, or BZ, or the mayor, or the store owners, or the residents. We all have the same goal. And that goal is to protect downtown, to keep downtown in the character that it is, because that is essential to Homewood. I can remember as a kid going up and down 18th Street, and it looks a lot the same now, with the exception of the curb's been taken out. I hope that 30 years from now, I'm still going up and down 18th Street, and it holds the same character. And this is important to get this plan in place so that we do do that. And we may need to work on some of the details, and I think, I think we've made a lot of progress with that, with Susan's recent recommendations. We may need to do some more, and we'll take the time to look at it and do that. But we all have the same goal. It's just about making sure we get a document that actually achieves it now. And I'll, I think we all look forward to doing that.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and carry this item over until our, no, we're going to, we're going to carry it over the public hearing without, until, carry it over to our next meeting on December 16th, next Monday. I'm sorry. Next Monday, December 16th. All right, with that, I'm sorry, any other comments?
Would it be possible to take a break after we do that?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that as we go ahead, and everyone's going to exit and catch a breath. We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come back and finish the balance of our agenda. Thank you. All right, next item up for tonight is 10-11-19, a public hearing of all things, for consideration of condemning a house at 1649 28th Avenue South, coming to us from Wyatt Pugh. We're going to begin with that. Mr. Thames, with a meeting, with a report from PND on 10-11-19.
So we're doing 10-11-19 first? Okay, all right. Committee members, time is zero to send this out without recognition in the phone.
All right, thank you, sir. And so we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing on that tonight. Mr. Pugh, I'll go ahead and begin with you to tell me the problems we're having with this house.
Yes, sir. The address is 1649 28th Avenue South. Back in August, the Housing Code Abatement Board voted to send this one, that this one should be a candidate for public nuisance. A dangerous, unsafe structure notice was sent out. They were given 60 days. No progress was made. So the Housing Code Abatement Board voted to go ahead and send this to you. As you can see, the dangerous conditions that exist mostly are around back. There's a, there's at least an eight-foot drop-off from a ledge, from a rotten, rotten wooden deck area that's not very well secured on its own. Once you walk around back, there's a hole. The door is completely rotted to the point where some, I mean, if you really wanted to, you could slide up underneath the door and go on in the house. So I'm afraid there might have been animals in there, so I didn't try. So in my opinion, this is an unsafe structure and should be condemned.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else here tonight wish to speak in favor or against this item? Yes, sir.
Excuse me, sir, could you sign in, please?
Yeah, please sign in and give us your address, please.
Sure. Well, here we got it. I'll play how we do your address for the record. Thank you.
Yeah, that's okay. What can I need up here?
Sure.
Thank you.
I am building a house across the street from 1649 28th Avenue South. And after listening tonight, I was just going to say, hey, look, I'm going to build parking spots there. So if that, if that's okay with everybody? I'm just going to build parking spots there. Yeah. I actually have the house under contract. We're closing it the first of the year. I know this has been a nuisance. I've actually lived, my first house is on Woodverne, so I've been in that, in that little area for a long time. But like I said, I've got, I'm building a house across the street from my family. I have that, this house under contract. We're closing it the first of the year, so, you know, all I would ask is that, you know, maybe give it a few more months before we make any decisions. But I know that this thing has been dragging on for a long time. I've talked to all the neighbors, you know, on the street that, you know, have kind of been pushing for this, and they all know the situation. So, you know, with that, you know, leave it up to you guys, but it is under contract to sell.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is there any way to secure some of those things, like the rotted door where there's space for something? Could you do something to secure those places that are dangerous?
Yeah, I'll get with you and find out what specifically, you know, needs to be addressed, but I don't, that would be, I can take care of that, yes.
What about putting a fence around it? I mean, that's what they do in a lot of places. They'll put a big chain-link fence around it. Is your plans to tear the house down? From what I see...
Have you seen the house? Have you seen the house?
I've seen, I've seen it in the back. I mean, I'm looking at pictures right now.
Yeah, it will be, it will be replaced with another, another structure.
Yeah, I mean, that's clear.
Yeah, so...
I was just saying, Andy and I have been speaking with Mr. Tangi, and we're very pleased he's got the property under, under contract. It's really been a nuisance for many years. And we explained to him that in the event that this process continues and we do condemn the house, you know, there's a, there's a fairly lengthy appeal process and things like that. And then even at that point, you know, Mr. Pugh can dictate when the bulldozer would show up. So what I would like to do, given that it has been an ongoing process, is continue the condemnation process with the understanding that, that Mr. Tangi's moving forward, has a contract on it, and we all expect him to take care of it before we ever would have to.
A couple questions. Do you have a closing date yet?
Yeah, in March.
You do have a date?
Yeah. I don't remember the exact date, but yeah, but it's in March.
Okay.
And Mike, remind me, isn't it a 21-day?
It's 30 days.
30 days, okay.
Any further questions while he's up here? All right, and just for the record, anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this item? Please come forward, sign in if you would, and... I think we need to lower all of your taxes if you sat through that public hearing, so I assume that will go into the record, but it will be of no effect.
I'm Wendy Cochran, and I live at 1626 28th Avenue South. I initiated this process five years ago, and it's taken that long to get here. I totally agree with Britt. I'm all for Ben tearing it down and rebuilding it, but I still would like to see it on the list. I realize there's appeal time, but if it's taken it this long to get here, if something happens and it falls through, I don't want to have to start this process over. So that's all I ask. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And if we, we carry this over, we can keep it in front of us.
All right, and that's what I mean. Let's, let's keep it, only if then, let's carry it over.
Okay.
Yeah.
That way we'll start over.
And I think we can do that for you. All right, so first, anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this item, seeing no one going to close the public hearing? Excuse me, any further comments from council on this?
I do, Kloski? I do have one question in regards to if the, if the property is not sold yet, but we're requesting, I believe it may have been John or Barry was talking about having some work done to close up some of those pieces, and he's not going to work on property that's not his. How do we...
How would you legally do on the property?
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I was asking, is what...
Only with permission from, from the owner.
Yeah, and I, I'll, the owner, I'll talk to the owner and tell, let him know, you know, what the deal is, saying, hey, you know, we got to do a few things, you know, here's what needs to get done. And I don't, I don't think, at this point, I don't think he's, well, he's not opposed to doing any of the work, and I think that he realizes that the, that the tunnel is closing in on him, so I don't think that there's going to be a problem getting that stuff, those few things done. I, yeah, I mean, he's not going to replace a roof or anything, but if it, you know, putting that kind of stuff up or putting something around the fence or the deck, because it is pretty wobbly. Yeah.
All right. Without any further comments, then we'll take, excuse me, this item, we're going to carry it over. We're going to keep 1649 28th Avenue South in front of us. We'll carry it over to our next meeting, December 16th, next Monday. Thank you. All right, so next item, 11-11-19, public hearing tonight for consideration of condemning a house at 618 Hanbaugh Avenue, coming to us again from Mr. Pugh. And we'll begin with another report from PND. Mr. Thames? Mr. Thames?
Sorry.
11-11-19.
Okay. Oh, boy. The council, our committee members, time is zero to send this out to full council. I recommend that we bend the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Pugh, I'll let you tell us about this property. Thank you, sir.
Okay, same timeline as previously. This one began in August when the abatement board identified it as a candidate. This one has actually sort of developed in the opposite direction as the previous one. I recently was able to gain entry. The, the actual homeowner invited me in. After taking a closer look at the house, I do not believe it's a candidate for condemnation. There was an unpermitted addition that was placed on the back. It actually is still in a state where it can be fully inspected, and any corrections can be made if necessary. I've discussed building permits and such that will be needed with the homeowner, and the homeowners are on board with that. With that being said, this also includes an accessory structure in the back, as you can see on the third page, and it, it is in dire condition. It's open, busted windows, collapsing roofs. So I would say that, that, in my opinion, is an unsafe structure. The house, however, the issues that the abatement board first identified, I believe they were cosmetic.
So would you, would you recommend then tearing down, have, ask, condemning the accessory structure and not the house?
Yes, that's correct.
And declaring that a public nuisance, dangerous property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I...
Go ahead, Ms. Wyatt, please.
I was just going to say, I think the homeowner may be here.
Yeah, I'll hear from you in just a second. Any other questions from Mr. Wyatt?
Mr. Pugh, I just, I'm not even sure exactly what I'm remembering, but I want to say there was some issue about the front steps. Is that, is that still exist and unsafe, or has that been solved, too?
Just hearing you say that, I remember now, we did talk about that, and I should have taken a better picture of the front. No, the front steps are fine. They're not up to current code in that there's not a landing that extends out three feet flush with the door. You actually, as soon as you come out the door, you, you hit a step. It's just, it's a step down, so that doesn't meet current code, but that's an existing non-conforming situation. And that kind of a situation is allowed on other doors that are not main exit doors, but in this case, that's the way the house was built, apparently.
That's something that could be corrected.
Well, it certainly could be. I mean...
To bring it up to code?
Sure. Sure.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Pugh. Anyone else here wish to speak in favor or against this item, sir? Please come forward and give us your name and address, sign in here.
So just to be clear, Mr. Pugh, you feel like, other than the accessory structure, which you do feel is a condemnable position, the rest is workable?
The rest is definitely workable. It's a very salvageable house.
My name is Reginald Markham. I've owned this house for 40 years. I bought it in 1979, and I lived there most of 30 years. And I had to go 30 miles away to run a family business, and that turned into sort of a booger of a situation. My father passed away, and I sort of had to watch over my mother, and it was her income. And then in 2008, the economy, you know, collapsed, and this was a small golf course as I was running. So then I had to start working seven days a week. My sister continued to live in the house after that point for, until a few years ago. But I was working seven days a week in financial trouble, and all I, the best I could do was to go check on the house once a week at night, usually. But I made sure, you know, nothing major happened to the house. But, you know, I just apologize that it has been empty for a few years, but there's nothing major wrong with the house at all. In fact, I have just retired, and I would love to do the necessary things. I want to put a roof on it and the, get the electricity up to code. The permits were pulled on the electricity two months ago, but the electrician is waiting on this process to finish his work. And then cleaning and painting, you know, and I would like to move back in the house, you know, at that point, so...
And what specifically about the adjacent structure, which is the one giving us concern about repairs to that?
I didn't even really know that that was a concern until tonight. It's just, it's a very small little outhouse building, you know, out, outbuilding, I think they call them. I can, you know, I can have that torn down. It's not that big a deal.
All right, just so I can answer these questions, I'm sure, but what kind of timetable are you able to get this done?
The, the building?
Well, I think, first of all, the adjacent structure that is creating the concern.
I'm sure I could get it done in 30 days. I mean...
Okay. All right. Okay, any further questions or statements?
I mean, this, this house is probably one of the oldest houses in that area. It's a wonderful, wonderful house. I love dearly with my whole heart. Have wanted to live there these years that I've been gone, you know, but it just couldn't in my situation.
Okay.
I can now, so...
All right. All right, thank you for that. Any further questions? Thanks, sir. Anyone else here wish to speak in favor or against this item? All right, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this item and turn over counsel for any further comments. Seeing none, I'll, we could do, carry this over without objection for a couple of meetings. We'll carry it over first for the next meeting on December 16th, next Monday. And, and perhaps, that would be two weeks from now. Perhaps you could provide an update to Mr. Pew. Mr. Pew, you can reach out, y'all can have...
It's just one way.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, oh.
It's the same.
All right, well, still, it would be nice to even have a further update within a week, and you can communicate to Mr. Pew.
On the outbuilding?
On the outbuilding, yes, sir. On the outbuilding, and we'll hopefully be looking in early January meetings to have this complete, so that we can perhaps drop this item and not have to pursue a condemnation. Okay? All right, so without any objection, we're going to carry that item over. Thank you, sir. Next item, 1211-19, public hearing tonight for consideration of condemning a house at 1612 Berry Avenue. Mr. Pew, I'm sorry, let me begin first with the report from PND. Mr. Thames?
The committee met and voted 5 to 0 to send it out without recommendation pending the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and, Mr. Pew, tell us about this property on Berry Avenue.
Yes, sir, same timeline. Housing Code Abatement Board in August referred this one. This one, I showed you some pictures last week, and with numerous unsafe conditions. Today, a gentleman showed up in the office wanting to take out a permit to do some work on this property, and so I went out there and took some more pictures today. As you can see, I've compared the yard last week versus today, and they've cleared out quite a bit. The dangerous deck on the rear, they removed as of today, and they tore down the steps leading up to where the busted-out window is, and they're going to fix the window. I invited them to come tonight and speak to you all regarding their plans for the house. However, as it sits, it's obviously a dangerous, obviously unsafe...
Well, I was about to say, they may have, they may not have been able to survive the length of the public hearing.
All right, Mr. Hickam.
I can speak directly to that. I rode up in the elevator with them, and they asked how long it would be, and I said, I have absolutely no idea, I'm very sorry. So they may have left. He said, do you think an hour? I said, oh, I really don't.
No.
So...
Might be closer to a day.
But he was here earlier. He rode up in the elevator.
I understand it's a new owner, someone new has bought it, and they've got plans for it.
And, Mr. Pew, you know, I noticed they did take the stairs off and the deck down, but that door is still wide open.
Oh, sure, it's still an unsafe structure.
Right, yeah.
That's not, that doesn't excuse it.
That didn't achieve the goal, but, yeah. I was like, no, you can still walk right off the side of it.
Sure, sure. I was hoping they could...
One at a time, y'all, all right. Mr. Thames?
What did he pull the permit for?
He didn't. I asked him to hold off a minute until the council had it say, and, you know, I didn't want to, didn't want to get ahead of the game here.
Okay, Mr. Harden.
I was going to ask the same question, what's purpose of the permit?
Gotcha, okay. Any further questions for Mr. Pew, while he's up here? All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this item? Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing. Counsel members, full of wisdom.
I'm going to go ahead and move to condemn this one.
All right, we have a motion to condemn by Ms. Smith, and a second by Mr. McCluskey. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, go have a little time.
Sure.
We'll let them know, but, yeah, and I apologize, the hearing was a battle of attrition, but there you go. We have a danger existing, so thank you. All right, I think it's the last one, 1311-19, public hearing tonight for consideration of condemning a house at 1117 Hardwick Lane, and report from PND, Mr. Thames.
Committee met and voted 5 to 0 to send this out without recommendation pending the public hearing.
So it's the same report, again, okay. All right, with that, we're going to go to open the public hearing. Mr. Pew?
Yes, sir, and also the same timeline. Housing Code Abatement Board sent it out in August, went through the necessary notifications. I also want to point out that this unsafe structure notice also includes the accessory structure. The accessory structure has remained unfinished for a number of years, and it's open, it's got openings, so there's no telling what, I would not recommend entry into it. I don't know what kind of dangerous situations inside. Also, there's no guardrails around the stairs or the deck, so a dangerous condition exists there.
Did you notice, we observed this owner, she's abandoned?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I did. It's a mortgage company that owns it now, so, and they've not, yes, sir.
That's what I was going to add, is that some neighbors discussed the property with a yard crew that was there several months ago, and they said they were sent by the bank, so...
Did you sort of notice that?
Well, according to the tax assessor, it still has her address, so all I could do was send it to that address, and I even resent another notice here just a couple of weeks ago, just to let them know there would be a hearing, and it was still marked like that. Posted the house as well.
The information I have says that Jonathan David and Anna Marie Miller at 1141 Hardwick Lane are getting the tax notices.
Oh, okay, that's new.
So they live on the street?
That's brand new. That's brand new, that information.
Her tax notices are going up the street.
Last I knew, she was in Alaska.
Is that the same name?
No, that's a different. That's a new name right there, that's new, new information.
Well, it shows in 2014, it looks like that, from what I can tell, that someone bought it, or the taxes were paid by closing attorney, and that usually that's what that would mean.
No.
Okay. All right, good to know, you know, Mr. Pew.
Concerned with the notice that we are aware of, but we have to notify.
What do we need to do?
Yeah, I'm concerned that we haven't...
We've got to confirm.
Notice, you haven't met the notice requirements.
We've got to confirm who it is.
Yeah, I don't know who it is.
All right, any further?
There's a good title search you can do to tell everybody that owns this house. You can do that.
Yeah.
You can do it on this one.
Oh, maybe so, okay.
Mr. Jones?
I just had a question on the, so the city paid for the fence to be erected?
Yes.
Was that, is that going to be added?
Yes, sir.
When we condemn this?
Yes, sir.
I mean, added to the expense?
I took that money out of the condemnation fund in order to do that.
But we would be reimbursed for it?
It'll be added to the lien.
Yeah, whenever something happens to it.
It'll be added to whatever lien.
When the lien is satisfied.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, anything else for Mr. Pew?
It's the front yard fence.
May I just mention, I did that on recommend, I did that on recommendation from the fire department, the fire marshal, he suggested that I do that. He felt very strongly about it at the time, so I reached out to a company that does this, and so that's why I did it.
The fence has shrunk over time. It is closer to the premises than it was originally.
All right, anything further from Mr. Pew, while he's up here? All right, seeing no one else, anyone else wish to speak in favor or against it? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Okay, counsel.
I'll move for condemnation contingent upon proper notification being made to the...
I don't think we can do it in that order is the problem.
Yeah.
I like your thought process, but...
So, it sounds like we need to confirm that we've got proper notice here.
Can we continue if we can try to figure out?
Yeah, all right, let's do that, let's do that. Without...
Who's that?
Any man?
I mean, we've had this property, I have done it times.
It's been for litters or overgrown yards.
All right, let's carry this over to next meeting. Mr. Pew, if you can find out what the latest is, let us know, December 16th, next Monday. We'll carry it over to them.
Did you close the public hearing though?
I already closed the public hearing, I already closed it. All right, thank you, sir. All right. Next item, public hearing tonight to consider request for consideration of update to the signed ordinance. I'm sorry we all had to make you wait for that additional 20 minutes. This coming to us with regard to the signed ordinance from Mr. Thames, and we'll begin with a report from PND. Mr. Thames, I hope this is a different report.
I don't know, it may surprise you. Thank you, Susan, and Lindsay, and Scott, for staying late after everything. Thank you very much.
Happy to, happy to.
Okay, so, the committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend disallowing neon and all LED signage within the proposal. That motion was made by Mr. Wyatt and seconded by Mr. Wolferton. The committee then voted to send the recommendation along with the proposed ordinance to full counsel without recommendation pending the public hearing. That was made by Mr. Wyatt and seconded by Counselor Andrews.
All right, thank you, sir. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing tonight on this item, and Susan, I'll let you speak to us about the current state of our signed ordinance that's proposed to us right now.
Okay, all right, so with that, I'm going to bypass all of the dog and pony show about the stuff you already know. And skip right to the requested changes. You have a memo before you that Hazel Boris with Placemakers crafted, and then, so she responded directly to all of the requests. The neon and LED is actually now added to the prohibited list, as well as being removed from windows in Table 2. So it's expunged from the code. And then the second request was to propose to use some sort of a reduction in the total number of signs. And so if you look at Section E attached sign requirements, item number 1, there are two new subbullets, A and C, that will, she determined, and I concurred, that to take all of the very large signs, the roof, wall, canopy, or marquee, and you can only have one of those, and then also to take both the projecting and the sculptural signs, because they act in, a sculptural sign usually is projecting, and you only get one of those. So essentially, she's reduced it by 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Yeah, it's 1/6 of what you could have had before.
Can you give me just a quick example of like what a structural sign would be?
A sculptural sign?
Yeah.
Okay, it's like a barber pole.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, it's something that's kind of cool and, you know, has a shape.
Okay, there's like a sign that has a lady in a wedding dress or something like that.
Exactly.
So, how do we account for the sign on a window that says "open" in this ordinance? If we've removed neon signs and...
You have to have a plastic one, and that was my point in the very beginning, is the neon is cooler than the plastic, but that's what people will do.
I think that's a mistake personally, but...
I agree.
I mean...
We had controlled it with size. We had gone down 18th Street back when we were doing the downtown sign code and measured the open signs, and they were like 12 by 24, so, I mean, it's a very small discreet amount. And we said you can have one neon sign in the window that is no larger than 12 by 24.
I think personally, if we were to take a recommendation, I would say we should at least add back the allowance for an open sign.
No, you can't do that.
You can't do that, okay. Because, not to mention that, what's going to happen to Scott from having to go down to every business, but take down your open sign, take down your open sign. Did y'all see the room tonight? Do you think that's going to...
Yeah, but you know what? That's not in the downtown code.
Whoever's going to enforce it.
You can do it downtown.
Do it downtown.
No, Andy, downtown, you can still do it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right.
Yeah, so before we get too far down this road, a ride-out sign is neon, and it's been there since 1951.
Where is that?
On the corner of 18th.
You're in downtown, you're...
So we're good?
You're good.
Y'all do what you want to, man.
I still don't think it's fair for the rest of Homewood.
Well, I agree, and I think, you know, hip, cool neighborhoods like Edgewood, you know, suddenly you just took away a cool factor, so...
I think some of us were concerned, I know, at some point, because we had several businesses that put LED lights around their windows, like...
Wasn't cool or present.
And the window lights? Windows, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so let's...
All right, Ms. Wolferton?
I just have a quick question. So some of the problem with LED lighting, for example, is that it's only visible after most business hours, and city employees and those that would be able to enforce it are not working, so...
So they never get turned off?
Well, they get turned on when it gets dark outside, and we don't have somebody that's enforcing code at 6:30 at night.
Right.
I mean, do you guys have any experience with enforcement components of something like that?
Yeah, no, in smaller cities, it's a real problem, because you're not going to pay someone overtime to go out at night and check it. So there will be no enforcement of it. Yes, somebody will have to complain.
Yes, Mr. Wyatt?
So, with the restriction that you talked about, if we put it back in, that would prevent someone from filling a window with multiple neon signs, like, you know, from all these breweries?
Yeah.
But you get, you get one, whatever it is.
You get one, and it's limited in size.
So we can't say it has to be an open sign?
No, no, you can't say that.
We can just say it can only be one, and it has to be this size.
It has to be this size or smaller.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Walton, if that's important to you, I'm fine, I'm sticking it back in.
That is, and we don't use neon, so that don't matter.
I sent them all the measures we issued in the last couple of years, and the original proposal was in compliance with the regulations you already issued.
Well, that's a pretty good point, too.
Yep.
Meaning we've issued variances that are now within this code that we don't have to revisit that, is that what you mean?
No, I didn't say that. It's still a process, but I reckon it's very strong, but if you're going to adopt this code, don't issue all these variants.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a problem, and, you know, at the risk of making you not want me to come back.
You will not be that lucky.
Lindsay doesn't want to come back, but we would love for her to, but... No, the reality is if you elect to regulate via variance, you nullify your code, so... You may as well not have one.
Okay, so we adopt this code...
You report that 127...
Okay, so if we, if we made the adjustment to allow one neon sign, okay, at the size of 12 by 24?
12 by 24 or smaller?
Yep.
That we can put that back in?
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve with that amendment.
Along with her other recommended...
All right, well, hold on, just a second, ladies and gentlemen, no, we haven't, we've gotten carried away.
Yeah, you got to, you got to open it up.
We're just here, we're just here during the public hearing question, but we sound like we've got a good plan, so, all right, any further questions while we have Susan up here? Seeing none, is anyone else here to speak in favor or against this item? Oh, Mr. Cook.
What if it isn't neon? You're specifying it neon, what if it isn't?
That's in there, too. Yeah, there's window signs in there.
Thank you for speaking up at the public hearing. All right, seeing no one else to speak in favor or against this item, I'm going to close the public hearing, and now turn it over to counsel for action. Ms. Smith?
I would make a motion to approve, to pass the code with the suggested amendments that Susan has given to us in this law and the mode, and also allowing one window neon sign with no larger than 12 by 24.
Can I?
You said 12 by 24.
You said 12 by 24.
12 by 24 inches. All right, so we got a motion. Hold on a second, we got a second from, I'm not going to vote on it. Mr. Thames is seconding it?
Oh, Mr. Waltney.
Oh, Mr. Waltney is seconding it, okay. Further comments, Mr. Wolverton or...
I'm just trying to get a clear understanding of how many maximum number we would be allowing.
Well, there's two categories.
Because we just talked about window signs.
Yeah.
There's also one roof or wall, one awning, one projecting.
One of each. You can have one of the whole lot.
One of the whole list. So you can have one roof or wall or canopy or marquee. There's only one.
This is clearly more restrictive than you really had to grant.
Yeah, and that's true. I agree totally with Mr. Kendrick that you are, by being this restrictive, you're exposing yourself to requests again for variances. So...
We will not give.
And then, and then the one projecting or sculptural, so if you're a barbershop, you pick whether you want the blade sign or you want the barbershop sign. And then you can have as many windows as you have, you can have a window sign, as many awnings as you have, you can have an awning sign. And I strongly, we didn't touch that because we don't think you should touch that.
So that's what I'm trying to understand. So do you get one in each of these A, B, C, D categories?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what she said earlier.
So that would mean I could have a roof, an awning, a projecting?
Yes, that is.
That's my issue. That's allowing...
Maybe, why don't you look at the type sign? Blade sign is the projecting sign. This is one of these rules.
Sure.
Yeah, and they all serve in different environments. For example, the wall sign or the canopy sign, the purpose of that is for cars that are passing. It needs to be big. You have to be able to see it from the road when you're moving fast. The projecting sign or the window sign is small. It's a scale of the pedestrian. So it's once you're at the shopping center and then you can see the detail. You can't see that detail from your car. So if you don't have the multiple scales, you're really doing a disservice to your businesses and you will be inundated with variance requests.
And you can only have an awning sign if you have an awning.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In my man.
Okay, any further, Mr. Wolverton?
I guess I'm confused on how it's less, or how it's more restrictive than what we currently have when we're allowing this to...
All right, Mr. Kendrick, you want to...
You had a history of allowing signs on every side.
Yeah.
And we've done that multiple times. And this only permits one roof sign or wall sign or canopy sign or marquee sign. So you have one sign there, one awning sign and one blade, which is a little bitty piece.
Yeah, it's a little bitty thing.
So compare that to what you...
But then all of the window signs, too.
Yeah, but they're small. And we say you can only do 50% of your windows. So they really are not big signs.
I'm not trying to get you to have more. I'm just trying to make sure you understand.
No, I hear you.
Well, that's what's going to happen.
And, you know, I hear you. I know we got a, we got a motion and a second, but, you know, we are, everybody, where we are looking at a more restrictive situation.
Which is fine.
Which is fine.
As long as we don't...
Just don't waste your time in waiting, right? I'm concerned that it's...
I thought the point all along was that we would...
I concur. Actually, I think our original goal and the original suggestions was to give you something that didn't proliferate sign clutter, but was reasonably scaled based on the variances you were giving. You know, not just the requests you were getting, but the stuff that you were permitting. And so if that's what you're choosing to permit, then we wrote the code for that.
But you still get the awning, you still get the...
All right, thank you for that. Actually, and we need, we're not ready for a motion or a second because, Mike, don't we, I need a first reading, don't I?
Yeah. You can adopt it.
So this is, okay. Okay, well, no, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just, so this is not, this is not required?
It is, but it requires a first reading before you get that.
Oh, it does?
Oh, really?
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so...
Okay.
I guess...
All right, so, all right, Mr. Wolverton.
I just, I don't know. I guess personally I'd just like some more time to discuss it. I feel like we rushed through it last week because of other items that were discussed extensively. We're obviously going to be in touch with placemakers about the other item that took up three hours of tonight's meeting. I don't know. I'm just struggling with jumping right into it.
There's one thing I would like to call to your attention that Lindsey pointed out, and that is because what you have right now is not in compliance with Supreme Court case law, you have no sign code at all at this point. If you chose to adopt this in the state that it is, it can easily and should be amended over time. So it would give you protection today, whereas right now you don't have any.
Okay, so in other words, which I think that relieves me. So in other words, we may have a more restrictive ordinance and we may run into some issues, but we will at least have the opportunity...
To amend it.
To make some probably easy amendments to this thing that will not be like turning the world upside down like we're doing tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
So can I ask one other quick question?
Yes, sir.
The building that we've received multiple variance requests for down on Lake Shore that has 12 different businesses in it, how is that building looked at in this?
That's addressed here. Let me find it.
Each business can have a sign, right?
Yeah, each business can have a sign.
But how many, per each business?
It's how many, how many businesses you have.
Just one, but I'm saying just one sign per business?
One per business, yeah.
In a shared use building?
Yeah.
But Susan, are you sure about that?
Yeah, I am. Let me find it.
Okay.
Sorry, this is Hazel's documents, so I'm a little slow to...
Each, each business can have those signs, right?
Yeah.
Wait till they get my bill saved.
Okay, that's Brooklyn Mall.
I just want to go to Mad Max.
Oh, no, you're going out.
I thought it was per tenant.
I think it's per tenant and it's wall signs. It's attached. So let me, for buildings that have more, multiple tenants.
Like a couple hours, one building on Lake Shore, there's...
Attached.
One west.
One projecting, projecting per tenant. Oh, no, wait. This is, these are public facades, these are building facades facing a public street, Mike, so you could have them on two sides if they're on the corner. But it does say that, it says one roof or wall sign. So it doesn't provide for that. You know what? I apologize. I will have to find it. I know she put it in here.
All right, well, while the...
I'm sorry, what about the Page 8 footnote down there, talks about the wall signs are permitted on the ground for only from multi-level buildings?
That's it, that's it. Thank you.
Page 8, the footnote down at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
And they have one sign.
Yeah, so like, for example, regions get the big sign and if they have tenants, they can have small signs. Yeah.
All right, so with that, Mike, I guess we have to do first reading.
Yes, sir. I understand what time it is. Section 5-150 is the purpose and scope. Section 5-151 defines the prohibited signs. Section 5-152 sets out the general requirements for all signs. Excuse me. Table 1 sets out temporary sign restrictions. Table 2 sets out general sign restrictions. Section 5-153 deals with freestanding sign requirements. Table 3 deals with specific freestanding sign regulations and illustrations. Section 4, 5-154 deals with attached sign requirements. Table 4 in that section deals with specific attached signs, regulations, and illustrations, where it defines all of your type signs. Section 5-155 deals with the Brookwood Mall signs, which has not been changed. Section 5-156 deals with the Wildwood Center signs, which has not been changed. Section 5-157 deals with specific area signs. Excludes the downtown and the West Homewood districts from this ordinance. Section 5-158 deals with administration and enforcement. Section 1, 5-159 deals with the definitions that control, that defined in this ordinance. Section 5-160 deals with a saving provision that says that these regulations now be construed as invading any pending actions. All the provisions of the Chapter 5 entitled Building, Construction, and Related Activities except the doubt of union remain in full force of effect. Tonight is the public hearing. Any part of provision or orders declared beyond constitutional law or part to remain, the notice becomes effective many points adopted by the City Council.
Thank you, sir.
I would move for unanimous consent.
All right, so I have a motion for unanimous consent, a second line, Mr. Waltney, and roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. So now we have the item before us.
I would, I would reiterate...
Hold on just a second. Okay, Mr. Wolverton?
Just wanted to clarify. Does anybody know where downtown signs, where do variance requests go currently?
They come to me on special issues.
So, but West Homewood goes where?
Same place. Every sign, no, y'all have a different sign code, y'all go to BZI.
Can, can we amend it so that they all come to the same place? Doesn't that make sense?
Not tonight.
No, we cannot.
We'd have to change the entire...
That's a zoning issue, isn't it?
Okay, all right.
Okay.
President Wright?
Yes, Ms. Wright.
I would reiterate.
I hereby recognize you to state an action item on this.
Thank you. I would reiterate my motion as stated previously that we accept, that we moved, I move to approve the sign ordinance with the suggested changes made by placemakers and also the one window sign neon to be no larger than 12 by 24 inches.
And I reiterate my second.
Thank you. And I have a second by Mr. Waltney. Any further discussion or comment? And roll call vote, Ms. Melody, thank you.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
I'm sorry, but point of clarification, we're voting on the amendment to the...
We are, we are voting on the ordinance with the amendments. We are voting to approve the ordinance with the suggested amendments and the neon sign addition.
Okay. I'm confused why we would not have to amend the thing before we voted on it. I don't know how we just bundle all that up like a Christmas present.
You're correct.
And then vote on the amended item. We don't have to have, I mean, we don't have to roll call on the amendment either, I don't think.
Okay, well, Mike, if, Mike, do we need to do a vote on the, it's form over substance? Okay, all right.
You can amend it.
All right.
You can amend the ordinance based on...
It's form over substance, so we're going to proceed with the roll call vote.
Ben Ammonow.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to make the roll call vote. We're not, we're not doing a motion to amend or... Okay, I'm sorry.
No vote on this.
Okay, Mr. Higginbotham, Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. And so that's going to be ordinance number 2767. All right, next item, 221119, public hearing is going to be for next week, December 16th, to consider declaring the property located at 413 Point, Sienna Drive, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750. That will be carried over till December 16th. 231119, public hearing set for December 16th. Also to consider, thank you all, to declaring, property located at 2916 Place South, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910, 1750. Again, that will be carried over to December 16th. 161119, request for consideration of declaring the following vehicle surplus, 2011 International 4300 4x2 truck, a 2012 International 4400 4x2 garbage refuse truck, and one MTS automotive tire changer.
Motion.
Coming to us from Mr. Squires and Gordon Janes. We'll begin with a report from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and voted five to zero to approve this item.
All right, thank you, sir. And Mike, I have down here for first reading of this...
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to declare certain property and equipment surplus. Section 1, hereby established and declared, the following described personal property, 2011 International 4300 4x4 truck, a 2012 International 4400 4x4 garbage refuse truck, and an MTS automatic tire changer be declared a surplus. Section 2, the mayor and the city clerk be authorized and directed to dispose of the 2011 International 4300 truck by treading the truck in for new equipment. Section 3, that the mayor and clerk be authorized and directed to dispose of the 2012 International truck and MTS automatic tire changer by auction to the highest bidder.
Thank you, sir. I entertain a motion for unanimous consent by Mr. Thames.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden. Roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wright?
Yes. And so that item's now before us. Entertained a motion for approval by Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Waltney, and roll call vote, Melody.
All right, Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. And so that item stands approved. Ordinance number 2768, excuse me. 171119, request to amend the fiscal year 192019 budget for payment to Jetty Tripp for additional meeting coverage coming to us from Counselor Waltney. And we'll begin with a report from Finance on this item.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee voted five to zero to recommend approving this payment.
All right, so we have a five to zero favorable vote from Finance to approve the payment to Jetty Tripp. And do I have a second?
Don't need a second.
Do we need a second on this?
No.
All right, thank you.
Who's that, Mr. Waltney?
No, we have no second.
You don't need a second for a motion out of...
It was five, zero vote favorable out of Finance. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that payment is approved.
I messed up the other one underneath that T. I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right. Whatever we can do to keep Walter on his toes. 271119, request for consideration of firefighter cancer policy coming to us from Robert Brigette, our Finance Director, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval
All right, so we have a five to zero favorable vote from Finance to approve the payment to Jetty Trip, and do I have a second?
Don't need a second.
Do we need a second on this?
No.
All right, thank you.
Who's that, Mr. Waltney?
No, we have no second.
You don't need a second for a motion.
It was five to zero vote favorable out of Finance. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that payment is approved.
I messed up the other one underneath that table. I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right. Whatever we can do to keep Walter on his toes. 271119, request for consideration of firefighter cancer policy coming to us from Robert Brigette, our finance director, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approving this payment.
All right, so we have a five to zero favorable vote from Finance to approve the payment to Jetty Trip, and do I have a second?
Don't need a second.
Do we need a second on this?
No.
All right, thank you.
Who's that, Mr. Waltney?
No, we have no second.
You don't need a second for a motion.
It was five to zero vote favorable out of Finance. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that payment is approved.
I messed up the other one underneath that table. I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right. Whatever we can do to keep Walter on his toes. 271119, request for consideration of firefighter cancer policy coming to us from Robert Brigette, our finance director, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the, to the city to purchase the enhanced cancer benefits policy for firefighters, pending review of the contract by Mr. Kendrick.
Thank you, sir. Coming favorable vote out of Finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that will stand approved as well. Next item, 191119, request for permission to place a small cell antenna at 236 Goodwin Crest Drive from Tim Hawkins and Greg Cobb with BEZ, and on this item, we'll begin with a report from special issues. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, committee met last Monday, and Mr. Hawkins from AT&amp;T came to the meeting, and the committee voted four to zero with one abstention to recommend approving the placement of the pole, and instead of a wood pole, he agreed to do a black metal pole, like a similar one that they did on the same street. Motion was made by Mr. Mcleskey and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham, and Mr. Waltney is abstained from voting, so.
Thank you, sir. I'm, thank you.
Whatever, I don't care.
Favorable vote in special issues, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that will stand approved, and that will be with one abstention from Mr. Waltney. The record says it'll be 10, 0, and 1, and that will be resolution 19-213, I believe, is that our first resolution?
214, I believe.
214?
213 was the, was the Berry Avenue property.
Gotcha, all right.
Get 214.
Next item, 300619, request to consider ordinance to govern appearance of small cell antennas coming to us from Mr. Thames, and a report from PND. Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir. Melody, I spotted an error in the minutes we'll need to correct before we approve. That's my fault.
Okay.
The committee voted four to zero to recommend approval of the item, the item being the new small cell ordinance itself, as provided by Mr. Kendrick, while at the same time voting to leave this agenda item number 300619 in committee for us to, in the future, pass a companion aesthetics resolution. So, we've got a four oh vote recommending approval of our small cell ordinance coming out now.
Gotcha, and as I understand, we'll have a first reading on this, Mike?
Yes, it's an ordinance to amend Chapter 18.6 entitled Small Cell Facilities as amended to read as follows. Section 18.6-1 deals with the purpose and scope of the ordinance. Section 18.6-2 deals with the definitions applicable to the ordinance. Section 18.6-3 deals with the grant of authority. Section 18.6-4 deals with the permitted uses, application, and fees. Section 18.6-5 deals with notice of transfer, sale, or assignment of assets in the right of way. Section 18.6-6 deals with replacement and maintenance of facilities in the right of way. This is a lengthy ordinance, I'm sorry. Section 18.6-7 deals with the application review, decisions, and timeframes. Section 18.6-8 deals with the application requirements and the process. Section 18.6-9 deals with removal, relocation, or modification of small cell facilities in the right of way. Section 18.6-7 deals with the annual license. Section 18.6-11 deals with the effect of the permit. Section 18.6-12 deals with insurance requirements at all times, small cell facility or equipment are in operation or in use in the right of way. Section 18.6-13 deals with compliance with laws. Section 18.6-14 deals with the applicability of this ordinance. Section 18.6-15 deals with enforcement of this ordinance. Section B repeals ordinance 2594, previously adopted on April 11th, 2016, which is a form of small cell ordinance. Section C deals with all of the provisions of the code of ordinances shall remain in full force and effect. Section D deals with any part of provision, the order is declared to be unconstitutional, although the parts provisions are remain in full force and effect. Section E deals with that any rules or ordinance is in conflict with a provision, this ordinance declared null, void, and specifically repealed. Section F deals with the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the City Council, approved by the mayor, as otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I'll entertain the, pass this motion for unanimous consent by Mr. Thames, seconded by Mr. Mcleskey. Roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes, I entertain a motion for approval by Mr. Wyatt, seconded by Ms. Smith. Roll call vote, Melody.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes, I want to entertain a motion for approval by Mr. Thames. I'll give you the second, Mr. Waltney, since you were so eager. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that'll be resolution 216. Last item, 081219, request to authorize the mayor to sign Aldott 18th Street Project amended funding agreement for the 18th Street revitalization from 28th Avenue South to north of Rosedale Drive.
I can speak to this real quick.
Coming from Mr. Thames.
Andy and I had a meeting that, last week, and essentially, as they're reviewing the estimated costs, they quintupled the right-of-way acquisition costs, which, according to Scott, if he was still here, tells you they've been doing lately. Neither the engineer nor the, neither our engineer at GMC nor the Aldott engineer in any way expects that to be the actual cost. And so, the Aldott asked for a document just reemphasizing that the City of Homewood agrees to cover any overages. We've already done that. This just pulls this specific line item out to keep the process moving along.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for approval by Mr. Mcleskey, seconded by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here we go. Fingers crossed. All right, Mr. Mayor.
(inaudible).
Thank you, sir. Mr. Waltney?
I just want to, Dr. Mayor, just selfie, because we're all here, it's like-
(laughing)
Got a smile on her, but, that's right, I'm the latest council yet. I, I'll say this, and then we can jump, pile on, but I appreciate each one of you, and I couldn't think of a better people to serve with than all of you, because you listen to your constituents. We made lots of changes, whether people agree with us or not. We heard everything they said, and we took that into consideration thoughtfully, and we made changes to this document, and I'm proud of that. I just wish that there was people left to hear that. I did have a couple of other comments about the bicentennial library, I apologize when I'm being prepared.
Is this Saturday?
Thank you.
All right. I sent an invite out. I know Debbie Falt told me about it a long time ago today, because she said you were going to talk about it tonight.
Yes.
But I did send an invite out, and she said the mayor was going to open, say something to open the meeting.
So, they have sent a bicentennial commemorative love for each council person, the mayor, JJ, Michael, Melody. The library is having the bicentennial program Saturday morning at 10:30. The state will be 200 years old Saturday, so they're having a fun party, the library, they invited us all to join those activities for your family. Charles King, who was commissioned by the state, will be attending, he will be there signing the books.
And, and she did have somebody bring the cup mugs, and Beau had them in a box, and I can't, I'm texting him right now to see where they are. Okay, you know where they are? Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'll set the floor for five.
At what time?
I'll need you. Is this prior to council?
Yes.
15, 5:15.
Five thirty.
Are the trains in authority?
All right, so five thirty, Mr. Waltney? Right, okay. Mr. Thames?
I'll take one.
Reiterate what Andy said, and I will not be calling PND.
And I actually won't call public works, but you can let me back in there.
Okay, so, so no public works?
Thank you.
No, no public works, no PND, all right? This is very helpful for December 16th, so, working along. Mr. Higginbotham? Thank you, sir. Mr. Wolverton?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you guys for being patient, and I know everybody really has, you know, the best at heart, and despite some pointed and directed criticism at people specifically, I think we shined bright, just like the city does in most opportunities, and my four-year-old lost a tooth this weekend. He might be the, the first casualty at the, at Patriot Park with the new playground, so he ran into something and knocked it straight out.
We don't need any more lawsuits. Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Mcleskey?
(inaudible). I'm sorry, (inaudible). (inaudible). So, yeah, no reason to, I'm not going to call public work either.
You guys are pictures of beauty.
(inaudible).
Thank you, sir.
(inaudible). Again, to reiterate what (inaudible) this is a, this is a tough issue, always knew what it'd be from the video, but, like, he said the changes, the (inaudible) and the meetings that were had, whether they were individual or (inaudible), whether they were some combination, whatever, were, were (inaudible). (inaudible). Especially you, because it's, it's always the quiet of some people, the best you could with that happen, so.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, thank you.
Finance at five.
Ms. Smith?
Well, I guess I'm the only other committee, so I'll take 5:30. I do have a few issues, and I think everybody, like Jennifer said, has worked very hard on this. I think we have earned our excessive pay this month, for sure, so, I love all y'all, but I'm piecing out after this and going to bed.
Thank you. Mr. Wyatt?
First of all, I think it's still Melody's birthday, so happy birthday one more time.
Can we just say it's not anymore, because I'm tired?
I'm getting, I promise I'm getting it in just under the wire at this point.
I don't, I don't really matter anymore.
Secondly, we have, and Melody, keep me straight on this, we have at least two of the insurance interviews set up for Wednesday.
Yes, I've got four and five o'clock Wednesday confirmed. I have one that's supposed to be checking on Thursday, and I've left two messages for another one that hadn't called me back yet, so I'll have to follow up on this tomorrow.
And we're looking at four and five o'clock, hopefully, on Thursday, too. Is that the idea? Okay.
I think I'd ask the one that's supposed to be confirming with her, her people to be four o'clock on Thursday, but she didn't get back with me, and then, one of the ones you sent, I've left two messages today.
Perfect. Thank you for doing that.
Uh huh.
So, those of you on the prestigious insurance committee, please make plans to attend, because you haven't done enough this week already.
I have forgotten whether I'm on that committee, so.
You are on that committee, and anyone else who wants to attend, obviously, is welcome. Lastly, I'd, I'd like to echo what everyone else has said. I'm very proud of getting to serve with all of you and what this council does, and I'm proud of the plan that we are putting together, and, and do appreciate all the input, and think that, think that we are continuing to improve the document, and I, and I will try to do this briefly, because the, you know, we, we do deal with some contentious issues at times, and we dealt with one a number of months or even years ago at this point, that I actually got a reminder of why we do it recently. Right before Thanksgiving, I, I had the privilege of being a grand pal at Shays Kehaba, and I, I did two sessions, took two remarkable little boys around Shays Kehaba, and had the time of my life doing it. They, they were wonderful. One of them was a fourth grader named Gene, and Gene was taking me on a tour of the school as if it was my first time to go on the, go through the school, and had a great time doing it, and was checking off his list, because at the end of the list was the library with the, with the lemonade and cinnamon rolls, and that was clearly we were pushing to get to that point. But, we walked into the cafeteria, and those of you that haven't been there, the cafeteria is one of the projects that's been, was done with the bond money and is completed, and it looks very different. And Gene, not knowing that I had anything to do with any of that, said, "Can you believe what this looks like?" He said, "It's so great, we're not on, you know, we're not crowded anymore, we get to sit where we want." But we walked into the cafeteria, and those of you that haven't been there, the cafeteria is one of the projects that's been, was done with the bond money, and is completed, and it looks very different. And Gene, not knowing that I had anything to do with any of that, said, can you believe what this looks like? He said, it's so great, we're not on, you know, we're not crowded anymore, we get to sit where we want. He could not stop talking about how great the new cafeteria was. And that was about the best thank you that I could have ever gotten for what we did, and I think that was the right thing, and I think what we're moving towards here is the right thing, and I, I think we will, that Homewood will benefit from it, just the same way Gene benefited from the, benefits from that new cafeteria.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Ms. Andrews?
I just want to say thank you to Lindsey Puckett, Scott Tillman, the Regional Planning Commission, Susan Henderson, and Hazel Boris, and the work that they've put in, and just the, you know, it's, it's, they've really put the blood, sweat, and tears in like the rest of us, they really have. And they've been standing there, you know, side by side with us, and they've been warriors, and I want to thank them for all the work they put in. Happy birthday, Melody. Fifty's not so bad. It's not so bad.
I'm so far, that's me.
So bad, well, yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point. And then, because Barry and I have not spent enough time together tonight, we are going to be back here tomorrow with our census committee. Oh, glad you told me that. We'll be at the library tomorrow with our census committee, really exciting, and-
I have an MBA final exam to do tomorrow, so come here, can I please send Lavanda for me on that, thank you.
And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
I've got the book War and Peace right here, and I'm gonna start on page one. Thank you, guys, everybody. It's so hard to sit there and be not, my personality's, sometimes I've really come at people when they come at me, and and Ms. Graffis, she's right on the border, and of course, her son's lived next door to me for ten years, and she doesn't know who I am. It's really scary, but anyway. But I, I appreciate everybody here. I just wish everybody out there didn't think we were all just a bunch of bad people trying to do bad things to them. And that, that's been, was my biggest struggle, is they just, they just somehow think we are just, just big, powerful people going to just do bad things to those poor little people. It's nothing further from the truth, but anyway, I'm grateful for all, for all of you guys. I'm just the new guy around here, and I kind of like that. And I like that I don't get to vote on it.
And again, everything was going well until we put you on the council. I'm not going to belabor it. Thank you all. It was, I think, really, actually was a good night for city government. Hard to see it sometimes, but this was a painful process. We got through it. By golly, we heard every one of them. We were gonna, and we were ready for another hour. Some of them multiple times, and, and we'll continue to hear them, and we'll continue to listen, and we'll continue to make this work for the, for our city, and really, you know, congratulations to you all, and look forward to getting this done, and yeah, well, with that, we're going to stand adjourned.